All right, it is 5:30 on the 8th of October and I would like to call the Concord Public School Committee in to order and we'll do a quick roll call because we have Michelle in line. Hercheck present.
Morano, present.
Bishardi, present.
Rankin, present.
Williams, present.
Michelle, can you say something again? Could you just say present so we can hear you?
Michelle, present.
Oh, good.
Sorry, all right, we got you now, thank you.
Could we turn that up just a little bit?
Yeah, we're just trying to.
Yeah. It's better than it was, okay.
All right, we have a brief Concord agenda before we roll into the CCRSD. I did want to just say I'm incredibly sorry to anyone that's listening that we had to cut our last meeting short. It was not ideal, we lost a quorum, it was not our intention to do so, so sincere apologies on that front. And we will have public comment tonight and of course we'll make even a better effort next session, which is in two weeks, to make sure we are not cut short, so thank you for your understanding. All right, first up is CTE policy.
Yes, I'll cue Shelley up. This is a requirement based on some new legislation that documents what middle schools need to do to expose kids to different options postgraduate. And in the mix of that is what their high school options can be. We met with Minuteman, who's our member district obviously, and worked with them on the policy requirement. This is due to DESI November 1st. So Shelley's going to talk you through what we've put together. The idea would be this would be your first reading tonight and your second one in two weeks. And then we would meet the timeline. Many districts have asked for extensions, but I think we're in pretty good shape. So I'm going to turn it over to Shelley from there.
Sure, yeah, so as Dr. Hunter shared, this is a new expectation regulation to ensure middle school students know about options post-middle school and consider all of their career and academic goals as early as sixth, seventh grade to understand what those options are and make sure that they have equitable access to those. So in that, this policy really is meeting the requests of what DESI provides as our guidance around what those needs are and it requires us to think about, of course, what's the collaboration and connection we have with, of course, CT, Minuteman as our providing school or our partnership school? That regular communication along with scheduling opportunities at no, essentially no cost or incredible effort for middle school students and their families to learn about what those offerings are. So it ensures that we have information on our website, ongoing communication with families, direct contact with Minuteman so that they could provide information directly to eighth graders. So we have an assembly, we have other resources and opportunities for families to learn about it. And then guidance counselors are supposed to help support families in understanding the application process and to ensure that they can do some school, some visits during school-based time to go see Minuteman if that's an opportunity that they would like to continue to pursue. So it really just provides that, the details of like the student tours and access, what the current pathways are and then integrating it into how we support our middle schoolers in career and academic planning. And then some of the kind of maintenance of records information that we need to share with Minuteman to make sure that they can directly reach out to families and students themselves. And yes, we need this by November 1. All districts are expected to provide this who have a, you know, CTE school available to them.
And do we have a lettering for that, for our policy? Is it going into our policies or is it just going to be part of what we have?
No, it's going into our policy. We'll talk to MASCE since this is a legal requirement, I'm sure they're giving us a letter.
A letter to put it under, okay.
Shelley, can you just briefly share how this differs from how we've done it previously?
It really doesn't. It really just articulates it in writing and memorializes it, but these opportunities have always existed. It's just making it much more explicit and clearly focused and so that it's public information. It has to be maintained in our records as well as not just one message, but you know, multiple media sources and resources for families to see and access just to ensure that kids do know and that no one is falling through the cracks. But again, these tours have always happened, the assemblies have always happened. The principal, you know, Justin, has been able to always connect with the high school, CTE high school with Minuteman and to ensure that they are sharing the information. So all of those things have happened, again, it's just established here.
So this just codifies a pre-existing relationship. Do you have anything that speaks to the track record that is, that the collaboration has had over the past few years?
I don't have the exact information, we could definitely get that information.
It's somewhere that we could find, see how things have tracked over the years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you, so there's this one line here, right? Shared contact information of all CMS families and students?
Yes.
With Minuteman. Are there, I mean, we have a lot of information about the students, right, obviously? Is all of it shared or is there restrictions?
It's essentially contact information initially. If a student applies, then that changes. But what they get really is email, phone address, parent guardian name, basics, so that they can directly access. It's the law that we have to give them the list.
No other personal or academic information or anything?
Does it make sense to write that in there in this policy or is that a different level?
I think it's so prescribed by law, we don't need it here. And this was a template given to us, so I'm hesitant to make too many changes.
Couple other questions. I think the policy says with particular attention to supporting historically undeserved populations. How do we know we're making progress in that?
I mean, we don't have any, any say in that. A lot of this is an outcome of the review that just happened of the VOK enrollment and acceptance policies. There's been a lot of allegation, and I'll stress allegation, that things aren't equitably being handled through the enrollment processes that the VOK schools are offering. I can't speak to the validity of that or not, but that's what the legislation's an outcome of, is trying to ensure that it's fair and equitable.
That's again another reason for looking to see how we can track how this performed over time. It'd be great if we could point to where we can find that information so that...
Yeah, I can't, we don't have records of who's accepted and who's not because they don't have to share that with us. All we could do is look at transfer. As far as I know, essentially all kids that apply from Concord are accepted.
And I promised my last question.
Yeah.
The list of, I guess, all of the courses on page two?
Yeah, the pathways.
Yeah. Are there any, first of all, I don't understand what wall-to-wall means. And second is, all of those, if somebody applies to those, are they guaranteed to spot or is there specific limits?
There are limits for each program, so that's considered. I think most of the kids who apply give a preferential list and not just in one choice. And they try to give them their top two or three.
And that's available with Minuteman probably, right?
Yeah. When we met with her, she said most kids are getting their first or second choice.
Yeah, in ninth grade you do exploratory, which is where you're reviewing, you indicate what your preferences or interests are, but you go through all of these tracks to understand a little bit about each in your ninth grade. And then you have to make your final decision about a pathway or vocational track you are taking so that you can earn certification or like certifications to be employed within any of these fields. So that's where most students are receiving their first to second choice within one of these tracks.
Yeah, I had lunch today with someone who has a daughter here and he was explaining that your first year, you obviously can't go very deep on 20 different subject matters, but so you can rank them and they do a really good job in your first year of getting like five or six deep. And then for your, you know, from there, they narrow it down. It's a pretty cool program.
It sounds like something...
Yeah, we think very highly of Minuteman. We've toured a few times. It's an exceptional facility ever since the new building came online. And anecdotally, we know that the kids we send are generally being very successful.
Still a question though, there's got to be a way for us to track that, our students that enter the program, how they do or how we're doing in terms of getting our students into the program. There's no way we can track that information, follow it over the years?
We would have to ask Minuteman for a data pull of some kind.
Would we track students after they leave?
Yeah, we don't have a way to do that.
So how's it different from looking how we, how we're doing getting students from, from high school into colleges?
Right, but it's only the entrance into college, right? We're doing this, we try?
Well, again, that's, that's, I want to know how, there's got to be a way to get some of that information.
Just so I understand, this policy is making sure we advertise and give people the option.
Access.
Agreed.
A follow-up question maybe, because, you know, we certainly pay good money to the program. We could maybe get a representative from them, their school, like their principal, to come and answer these questions.
Sure.
I think you'd want to invite Heidi Driscoll, who's the superintendent right now, is probably...
Yeah, so if that's something we want to do, let's maybe do that at a subsequent meeting.
And if you have data requests, I think you'd have to ask her those ahead of time. So she would have to pull those together.
I just, again, interest of time and this is a pathway.
Fair.
Okay, so there's no vote tonight?
No, the vote would be in two weeks.
This is first read?
Yep.
Any other feedback?
What's the wall-to-wall?
Wall-to-wall, is wall-to-wall just like within the...
You stay in the same school for academics and your VOK program.
I'd never heard that.
Yeah, it's a jargon.
And I'll just have to mention that Carlisle members who are not here yet, they're really jealous that they don't have access to Minuteman.
Yeah, we're, I'm talking a lot with Brian. They're still talking a lot about how to help the Carlisle students access programming.
Programming, yeah.
Because they're not members.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Bob, year-end CPS.
Can somebody make me a panelist?
I can do that, sorry. Send it to you?
Yeah. So I'm going to start with FY '25 year-end for CPS, which we didn't get to on last week's agenda. And I'm not going to read through the whole report. Hopefully you've had some time to read it. I'm just going to call out some things that I think are worth noting on the report. And at the end, I will ask for a vote on the budget transfers. At this point in the year, our close is essentially done. We have a formal reconciliation with the town. We compare our general ledger to the town just to make sure we have the same records. And that process is essentially complete. Just some final work to do. I don't anticipate any adjustments to these numbers, but if there are, I would send an update, just include a memo in a future school committee meeting later this fall. Overall, our budget for the general fund, I present our base budget and I show the supplemental funding we receive for homeless transportation separately because I feel it's important to put that to the side and note that it's going to go away when the shelter closes. So our base budget was $46,515,713. We had a supplemental appropriation of $76,309. That was related to homeless transportation. Those are costs we incurred and we get reimbursed from the state the following year. The town, the town basically then appropriates that fund to the school district as supplemental funding. We ended up with essentially spending down all the funds. There's an unencumbered balance of 987 out of that 46.5 million. And at the end of this report, there's a summary of general fund transfers that were executed throughout the year. Provided a summary of state and federal grants that's included. Just one, a couple of things to call out there. The ones hot shaded in mauve, whatever color that is, peach colored. Those are competitive grants. So the other grants are entitlement grants. We will get those every year. Title I, you might have heard if you're following the news that the federal government's talked about some slight reductions to Title I. They are fairly small for both of our two districts. So they'll have a little bit of impact to us, but not substantial, not significant. The core, you know, federal funding grant we get is IDA funding and that has not been something that's been talked about being impacted currently. We did get some competitive grants through Metco, a special ed grant and a racial equity integration grant as well. And then we have through our health insurance company, a loss prevention grant. We do have some grants this upcoming year as well. These are important to support our initiatives related to implementation of ELA programs at the elementary schools, but that's an FY '26 grant. So this is a combination of entitlement grants and competitive grants. Most of the funding is through the entitlement grants. In terms of revolving funds, in CPS, there's three main revolving funds. You might recall that we did vote to establish two new ones for this upcoming fiscal year, a facilities rental revolving fund and a non-resident tuition revolving fund for students that might attend our special education programs at CPS. School Lunch is self-funding, it's essentially operated break-even this year. You can see it went down about a little bit over $1,000 and it ends at a balance of just under $180,000. Circuit Breaker actually increased slightly, that was not anticipated. We, there was a change at the state level late in the year to allocate a larger percentage of transportation costs. They had not been fully funding transportation, special education costs. And with that, we received about $86,000 and $86,000 boost to our Circuit Breaker revenues that we were not expecting. And that's what essentially drove our increase. Preschool, we just passed practices, we essentially zero that out each year. So we take the revenues we receive and we apply them to offset preschool expenses. I kind of provided a list of the budget transfers as well. You can see the far right figure is the balance that's left. Excuse me, the screen's slid up here. The $987 is the unencumbered balance. The school committee, the approval I'm requesting tonight is to approve the second column figures, the budget transfers and adjustments. The $76,309, typically this would be zero, but the $76,309 is the homeless transportation reimbursement, supplemental appropriation. And, you know, one significant, I've kind of provided some highlights of what's driving these. You likely will have seen these in the third quarter. They haven't changed too much in terms of what the explanations are. Our fixed assets, I delayed the purchase of some school buses into FY '26 to save some money there in a difficult budget year, felt that was necessary. The homeless transportation costs are in the 3,000 series. That's why that's so significantly over budget. And instructional leadership, we have a variety of things that have contributed to that. There were some deferrals to instructional supplies and materials, that was intentional. We also obtained ELA grant funding. We had some planned expenditures that we did not need to undertake. And there was also some savings for replacement hires and leave-of-absence coverage. So those are the highlights. And so I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. Absent any questions, I would request your approval for, the motion language is further up. I'll put it on the screen for somebody.
So I move the Concord School Committee will vote to approve the FY '25 year-end budget transfers as presented in the year and summary report.
Second.
All right. Hercheck, aye.
Morano, aye, sorry.
Bishardi, aye.
Rankin, aye.
Williams, aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Bob.
So on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. Share this document. So this is, for the new members, this is an annual exercise with the Concord Finance Committee where they request certain information from the school district to help them with establishing financial guidelines for the budget process. We plan to share this information with Carlisle as well, but it's in response to requests provided and submitted by Concord. There's a lot of information in here, so I want to kind of walk through it. And as we go, if there's questions on specific areas, just, just let me know. I share this, the first part, our budget process is zero-based. We do not just carry items over from year to year. We start and we basically identify every specific need, every software that we need within each department. Department heads are tasked with doing that within their departments at the high school and the middle school. Within the elementary school, a lot of it's done in coordination with the principals in teaching and learning. So we look for out-of-district tuitions at every single student that we think is currently out of district, that we know is currently out of district, and budget those and forecast what the placement cost increases might be. So it's truly zero-based and this is just a reminder that that's our process, which is different than some other districts. The five-year spending projections I'll do next and go into more detail on that, but that's something they requested as part of their process. In terms of spending level changes, so we talked as a leadership team about this and certainly supporting the strategic plan would be one thing that could potentially impact our spending level changes. Although there are items in our plan that don't cost money. There are things we want to do that we're going to pursue educationally, but there's not necessarily a cost to them. There is something that we've kind of observed, that our math support, we have ELA specialist roles built into the staffing budget at each school, but we don't have that for math. It's been the assistant principals serving in that role. So we highlight that as something that could impact our spending level over the coming years, although we certainly would look for opportunities through reallocation of resources. That would be a way we might consider giving those roles specifics and serious consideration in the future.
Bob, good question. So is the plan for those math specialists in the coming year or is that part of the five-year projection?
This is, the spending level changes they ask about, you know, in the next few years.
Okay.
So it's something that's been talked about. We don't have it in our budget.
It's on the horizon.
Yeah, we haven't even built our staffing budget yet. What we'd like and what we decide to do are, you know, those are things we have to weigh. They've also asked for an update on FY '25 year-end, so I provided what I just shared with you. I've just provided them a link to that. It includes a general fund, it includes the revolving funds. For FY '26, it's really too early in the year. I will do my first update to the school. And typically, I, any information I present to the finance committee, I present to the school committee first. So I believe at the, one of the next school committee meetings, I'll be presenting an FY '26 update. At that point, it will be a little bit more, month and a half, close to two months into the school year. So it'll be useful. It's not really too useful to try to give that at the end of September. Top issues. These are not new, you've probably heard of these, but in our existing special education programs. Enrollment projections continue to be something we'll have to focus on and pay attention to with housing developments coming online. There's no impact this year, but that's something we'll have to continue to monitor. I think as we go to get more sophisticated in how we do our projections on that. And then we've done a review of our curriculum needs for ELA and we're implementing that this year. Something that Shelley and Laurie have talked about is looking at this more robustly across all of our subject areas and kind of developing a five-year or multi-year plan to do this. And so that's something that will be on our radar over the coming years. The Tier One and Tier Two capital programs are a separate process, so I've just kind of outlined the dates there. And we'll be working to meet those dates for the finance committee and presenting at a school committee meeting before November 20. We're talking about just Concord now, so I'll just, we have a pretty detailed assessment that we did of our buildings. I think it's two years ago now. And those are a guide for us as well as checking in with our principals and our new facilities director and team just to see what needs they identify. I will also note, we've heard that this is an area, there may be some constraints this year from the town of Concord and so we are going to do our best to be mindful of that as we go through developing our list of capital needs. We do also do stress to the finance committee that we don't present a wish list to either the school committee or the finance committee. We prevent a list that's been vetted. There's cuts that were made before we presented to you. We feel like that's our responsibility to do that, so I just wanted to be clear on that. There's a lot of information on student enrollment that's been requested. I'm not going to go through that. That ends up showing up in our budget presentations and that'll take a lot of time. It's probably its whole own subject matter. But it is in response to what they provided, we provided some information to them. It's certainly in the regional budget, something we're going to actually talk about in the budget workshop tonight. And CPS, our concern would mostly be about our capacity. And I think in the short term, that's, that's not a concern. It's more of a, what does new, what does new housing, what does new growth do over the long term? But we've outlined what we, answered their questions about what we see as our capacity and what some new developments might bring. We shared the, I think that's the MCI study that we shared. One of the things we're asked about as well with enrollment is, what is, if we were to grow enrollment with new housing, what would happen to our, our budget? You know, you, we wouldn't have a one-for-one dollar increase for, for every budget dollar. Every, every student, it's not going to, our costs are not going to grow at the same ratio as their existing costs. So they, we were asked to identify, you know, what portion of your costs are fixed versus variable. To be clear, this was an exercise that we undertook, Dr. Hunter and I. This is not, you know, you could have one student who comes in that has significant needs that is going to add significant costs. You could have another student who just gets absorbed into a classroom. We don't need to add any staff. Maybe we don't even have to add maybe a couple hundred dollars in instructional supplies. That's about it. So that said, we took a stab at doing what we thought might potentially happen if we added a certain number of students. And for CPS, we use the example of 50 CPS students. And so our estimate was that for 50 CPS students, we might add one classroom teacher, two special education assistants. And that's based on our ratio of special education assistants to overall student population and staff. Curriculum, material, software, we estimated about 200 per student, looking at, some of our materials and software, we pay a certain amount for software for the school or for classrooms. It's not going to change with students, but some of the materials are consumable. So we estimated about $200 per student for that. We came out at an increase of 182,000, which on a budget of 47.6 million is about a .4% increase that we'd have on our budget for an increase in 50 students. And again, this is an exercise, it's an estimate, reality can vary. But it's a question that I think the finance committee just wanted to have a sense of what it might, what it might look like with enrollment growth. I also looked... I also looked at our ratios for out-of-district students. We're very low at CPS because of the in-district programs. We've built about .75% of our students are out of district. You know, if that were to hold, then again, that's an assumption, but if we were to assume that same ratio applies to an incoming number of students, it would take about 133 students to have another placement. A mid-range cost would be about 125,000 in tuition and 30,000 in transportation.
And that's just a model that you used and developed? It's not exact?
We talked it through, basically.
It's assumptions.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you talked.
And it's, you know, it could be different next year, it could be, so.
Is this the first time using this model, or?
I mean, I've thought about it in theory, but I might have had to do something like this in a different, my previous district, but we know, just to a certain extent, that staffing fluctuates a little bit, but not, it's not drastically sensitive, but there is points when you have to add staff.
So much of it just depends. If 50 kids all come into the same two grade levels, that's going to tip the money faster than if they're spread across multiple grade levels. So, Bob did a nice job of giving you an example of what could happen, but
Yeah.
there's so many unknowns, it's impossible to predict.
Certainly at CPS, like probably 10 years ago, there was an influx of 70 students over the summer, and it moved the English classes in one grade up to like 35 kids. So, there are things that can happen that are beyond your control. And that wasn't even foreseen to be, it wasn't in any of the enrollment data or anything else.
Right, right.
In your, in your look at the data, are there things that are the prime drivers? I guess the example that you brought up is a higher percentage of special needs students transitioning in, or a lot of students coming in in one particular grade. Is there any, anything that, as you look at the data, that you would see is, that would be a key driver that could lead to a bigger expense or a lesser expense?
Well, what you mentioned are two of the key drivers. Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, also, it could be just luck, like we could have class sizes of 23 that are right on the cusp, and you could get like 10 new students that causes you to push to a, to an additional classroom in the special education. We can't really, that's one we can't predict, like I, I think we, that's why we just relied on, if we were to assume the same ratio, I don't want to, we don't want to say it could be a higher proportion, it could be a lesser proportion. It would be hard to be a lesser proportion than we have now. We have a pretty low percentage relative to state averages.
Given that there may be ways that you can bracket our high end and low end, you know?
Possibly, yeah. So, the next part in terms of education reform and mandates, I don't know if this really technically qualifies as a mandate per se, but we have heard at the federal level of some potential reductions to Title I, be approximately 15,000 to 20,000 if what we've heard holds. That would actually be FY '27 impact. So, fortunately, IDA grant funding is not being impacted, which is substantially larger. Pension and OPEB, they ask for this information, it doesn't apply to Concord Public Schools. They've asked for a lot of information on out-of-district tuitions. I'm not going to go through this all, although I will show you that you can see the trend from FY '21 to FY '25. The total has declined significantly. I think that's mostly from our build-out of special education programs. There's probably also some, maybe there's some drop-off from, as we've gotten further away from COVID, but probably the combination of those two. You can look at our, our net numbers fairly small. And we use Circuit Breaker and IDA grant funds to offset our general fund impact. So, that's just the tuitions. There's also an example of what typical placement costs are, high and low, and what the range is, so we've shared that with them. And then we have historical data on Circuit Breaker. You can see, we ended FY '25 in a healthy position. Thankfully, the state funded it fully in FY '25. So that certainly gave us a boost. So, best practice would be to carry over the full amount of revenue we receive. We're not quite there, but we're certainly in an okay space for CPS. We were asked to provide information on Ripley Building occupancy data. So, that's a listing of our spaces, our staff, and what the costs are related to Ripley. This was information we also provided to the Land Use Study Committee, and we leveraged the data for this exercise as well.
Does the, I guess, from looking at Ripley, I understand that it's essentially at the end of its lifetime? Does that have any impact on, has that been factored into your planning as you look at the five-year projections?
I mean, we're not planning to ask for anything for Ripley. If it's still, whatever's, needs to be fixed will be fixed, like if it's broken, but we're not asking for anything related to Ripley, given that we just completed the middle school project. It's included in the land use study by the town because they thought it would be comprehensive to include all spaces. It's more of a long-term look at needs. But it's not something that we have, the most important thing we needed was to protect the server equipment that's in there that's worth over half a million dollars, and we, that was a $15,000 capital article. It was in our capital budget last year, so we actually just submitted the order, and that's going to be placed. But other than that.
The boilers is what keeps us awake at night. They're original to the building.
But just things like that, I think what the building was, 55, 1955?
Yeah.
So, so, looking at the things that are in it, the servers, I'm just thinking about the students and the services, and looking five years ahead, that's going to, if the building's at its end of lifetime, planning at least for what we do around that when it reaches end of lifetime.
Yeah. I think my thought would be to acknowledge that, you know, I've certainly in here shared what the capital costs are that were recommended by the consultant, but some of those are recommended. We didn't necessarily think we needed to do everything that they listed there. Some of them are not necessary, they were, like, you should probably do this if you want the space to be more usable. Some of them where you're getting near end of life on some things. I think. Yeah, it's, it's a balancing act. We want to just be clear, like, there are some needs in the building, but we also, if we don't need to ask for them, we're not going to ask for them.
We've done some upgrades, especially to the student-facing preschool rooms over the last few years, paint rugs, some reconfiguring to get more out of the space that's there and make sure we're meeting our needs. So, I feel like that's going to continue to elongate the timeline. As far as the adults, we're only focused on basic, you know, can they work, can they be comfortable and safe? That, I feel like we're in reasonable shape on. So, I think we're glad to be part of the land use discussion. I think the town understood this building was going to need some discussion and has just included us in the big picture, which feels appropriate to me, and I think there's time to allow that process to play out.
Yeah, and so I represent the Land Use Working Committee, and they, we've looked at 15 properties that the town owns, and Ripley's very much part of that. We've toured Ripley, and that's really more of a long-term planning for the whole town with the town.
But to your point about what those costs might be, they're highlighted in the next section in terms of future repair and replacement costs. The consultant's report gets into some things that are operating-level budget, just routine repairs and maintenance, but a lot of this is capital, certainly the large dollars, and, you know, I don't know, things like replacing a roof, I don't know that you want to do that in a building that we might not be in for a long time. I wouldn't, unless, you know, unless it was absolutely necessary. Another thing they asked about was the impact of the close of the shelter. We received pretty robust funding from the state on this. The impact it had, there's two parts. It provided support for us to hire a lot of staff, primarily at Willard, where we needed multilingual instructional assistants in grades K and 1. We hired an ELL teacher, a family liaison with the shelter. We had summer school teachers. All of those positions have gone away with the close of the shelter, so the grant funding's gone away and the positions have gone away. So the budget impact is essentially none. It supported what we needed last year, but with those students moving to other locations, we no longer have the grant funding and the positions were eliminated. The transportation piece is very significant for Concord Public Schools. It was 306,000 last year, which we absorbed in the budget through various ways. We're going to get reimbursed for that at the end of this fiscal year, and we'll be following the same mechanism we have in the past, where we request that as a supplemental appropriation in the FY '27 budget, and our hope will be that we can basically build our Circuit Breaker backup through that. Okay. There's some information on legal costs and settlements that we've shared in response to questions they've had in that area.
Bob, question on the legal costs. Is that based on some kind of variance analysis for the, say, the last five years or so?
Can you say that again?
Is that, that cost that you've estimated, is that conservative? Is that, you know, too much?
I listed what we spent last year, which was 64,000 and change, and we budgeted 70, 70's around the range we budgeted in recent years, and it's consistent with the trend. Sometimes, we might come in a little bit under that. And that includes both, just general legal issues and also special education-related issues where we consult. They're pretty complex legally, helps to have an attorney weigh in with those. Strategic priorities, we list this, this is just in our strategic plan, we just share that with them as a reminder. And the Circuit Breaker example of funding, people always seem to have a question about that, it's complicated. So I'm just, I just left that example in here from last year. There might be new School Committee members or new Finance Committee members, so. Those of you who are at the Budget Workshop already have this down, so we won't go through that again. Michael was going to explain it tonight, I think, right?
My teeth are already hurting, so.
So, there's no vote for this, but this, that's the information we plan to share on the 16th. Happy to take any feedback on it, or you can email the chair, and, but we typically present the same information to the Finance Committee.
Do you want to pull up the projections quickly?
Oh, right.
You can just go to the numbers, probably.
So, the Finance Committee also asked for five-year projections. We took a look, and this is through our crystal ball. Some sense of basically looking at where we are this year, is there any surprises? We have some trend data in terms of what's typical for the different categories of expenses, but what we're looking at right now is we're anticipating about a 3.5% budget increase for CPS. This is before we've done the budget. We've done some high-level looking. We seem to be about level on out-of-district tuitions, which is a budget driver, and we seem to have a handle on where we are with salaries, so this is where we are right now. In terms of, that's our total expenditures. The grant funding, we expect IDA to be robust still. Title I, a little bit of a decrease, that's why grant funding doesn't go up much. The revolving funds, we projected a slight increase, and then we also projected a slight bump because we have a facilities rental revolving fund this year. The combination of some modest growth plus that is driving that. And Circuit Breaker's going to be fairly steady. You know, the growth there is essentially growing consistent with about a 3% increase of what our providers, our private schools, private special education schools are charging for tuition increases. And since our reimbursement's based on what we pay, we're mirroring that in our Circuit Breaker reimbursement. So we, at this point, are forecasting fairly steady increases. The further out we go, the less confident we get. We don't know what's going to happen two, three years from now, but, you know, things can change, but, you know, this is a projection exercise based on what we know today. And in schools, things can change more quickly than maybe in a town budget. And then this just shows the assumptions behind those numbers, and I'm not going to go through them really in detail. Where, the only thing I would highlight is the out-of-district tuitions of 8%. I think we have one additional placement we may have, and we don't have many moving up to, out of eighth grade to ninth. So, that's the only significant bump, and it's mitigated by some of the other items. That's, that's the projection that we have. Any questions?
I'm trying to, I guess it's something later that I've seen in the CCRSD preliminary five-year projections and town assessments. It's just a question that I had on that.
We're going to, yeah, on CCRSD section, yep.
Okay. Good?
Yep.
Thank you for doing all this.
Sure.
And just really thank you. Incredible amount of work went into the data behind all this, because all of you should have received the letter in August, and it was quite extensive on the data, so really kudos to Bob and Laurie for really getting this done.
Bob.
Bob. Thank you, Bob, again. This is Bob's night tonight, I feel like.
Cool. Thank you. All right, last item before we head to the CCRSD is just to revisit the warrants that we pulled off two weeks ago. Any additional questions on them?
No. My primer with Bob answered almost all my questions.
Yes. Again, thank you for the interest and all the, I saw the back and forth as a spectator of the data flying around, so thank you very much. So I do need a motion to approve this.
I'm going to approve the warrants 1019, 1025, and 1029.
Do I do all those in favor, or?
You can just do all those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I think that Brian and Lynette might be in the other room, so I'll wait for them to come in, or we call the region to order.
The kids out there, too?
They are.
Yeah. I'll find you some chairs.
Oh, okay. While you're setting up chairs, we're going to take a quick school footage photo for the mosquito, the Carlisle mosquito.
Do the kids want to set up the chair? Bob and I'll take care of the chairs.
Real quickly?
Real quick.
We're going to do the picture, we'll take care.
Super fast.
Are you going in the hallway or you want this? This right here?
Right here, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. We're here. There are high standards up here.
You're missing Sandy.
Oh.
Is he? Is he?
We're missing one. Where'd he go?
He's around the corner, he'll be here in a moment.
Okay. Do you want us to close these?
Oh, that's an award. It's a big occasion.
Thank you for hosting us.
Yeah, I know, I love coming out here.
I think you're post-mosquito season, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Not official.
Actually, we haven't had, we won't, give us another few days, we haven't done our first freeze yet. We haven't gotten our first freeze yet, so give us a few days.
No, but I think it's been sort of a while.
True.
Thank you for that.
Let's make sure we have it for our.
Okay, for our, yes, we need it for other purposes.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're going to do it again when the MECO reps are able to attend in person, yeah?
So when Michelle and Ayesha are in person, we're going to do another one. We have two of our student reps here tonight. We need everybody. We did student reps last time, though. All right.
They're not on trial.
Okay.
Welcome.
So with that, I will call the Regional School Committee to order, and I do not see Ayesha online. I think that she is working, okay. All right, so first up, sorry, Ryan. First up, we have CCHS students. We have the Black Student Union with us, and I don't know if, Lori, you want to give an introduction?
Yeah, I'm actually going to turn it over to them very much.
So I'll, my name's Chris Skinner. I'm the MECO Academic Liaison at CCHS, as well as co-advisor, along with Mike Lonergan, for the Black Student Union at CCHS. We're very proud of the work the students have done the last few years. They've really grown the club, and I'm very excited to see the direction that Mark is ready to take to be the president for the club. I'm ready to see what he does this year. Very excited. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to these two.
Is this mic on?
It's, so the mic is on for people on Zoom. It won't project into the room, so just speak into it.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Johnson. I'm the president of Black Student Union at CCHS. I have my leadership team with me. Just going to talk about what we've been up to this year, our plans, and.
Who's on Zoom, so we can promote them and we can see them? Zion?
I think Janaya and.
Janaya, Zion, and Exori.
All right, we will promote them.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry.
No, that was important.
So I'm going to pass it on to Zion to talk about our core mission when he's ready. Salma's with us.
They're all there, yep.
Okay.
There they are.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Zion. I am a senior currently at CCHS and a member of Black Student Union, and our Black Student Union has always been an important space for Black students at CC, but this year we are really taking things to the next level. We're making our mission to make it more inclusive, and we believe that real progress happens when we all work together. Instead of pointing out problems, we want Black Student Union to be a place where people can come together, find common ground, and actually create a real effective solutions that make a difference in our community.
Hi, I'm Kyle LaMuzgar. I'm a junior here at CCHS. I'm a new member of the Black Student Union this year. While I initially approached the opportunity with some hesitation, I was ultimately drawn in by BSU's clear focus on actionable solutions and community building. The leadership and members have been incredibly welcoming, and it's become clear that it's an ideal organization for any student who is serious about learning and fostering a more inclusive environment for students at CCHS.
Hi, I'm Exori Fairborn. I'm a member of Black Student Union. We're super proud to say that all this work to be more inclusive is definitely paying off. Our Tuesday morning meetings' numbers have grown a ton this year. Our main goal is to still get a lot of more diverse groups of students from all CC corners to join us. We're hoping to keep this growth going all semester because the bigger the more diverse group just makes us stronger and better, and finding tho, finding those great solutions like Zion was talking about earlier.
Hi, I'm Janaya. I'm the vice president of BSU, and we absolutely have to do our potlucks again. They were such a hit last year, and they brought a lot of BSU from Bedford and Wakefield schools together. We had a great time sharing food and making connections, and we're looking forward to bring a few more local schools this time around. And secondly, we absolutely have to bring our ovens again for another big sale.
So, yeah, we're all about growing new voices in a more diverse group this year. We have two community events planned. We have the potluck, and we're planning Craydles to Crayons, and we're going to go in that direction. I'm also, I have a new Instagram page, if you guys could follow it, Black Student Union at Concord-Carla High School. So, yeah, we're just working on our fundraising and building up the club. We're also going to sell some sweatshirts, and we're hoping to sell it in the Possibilities store in town and do that for fundraising.
Are they making our sweatshirts, too? Are they making the sweatshirts at Possibilities?
No.
Can they? They can, if you want to connect with.
I didn't even know that.
Yeah, it's our new thing, yeah, so.
If you haven't.
We'll connect you with Brad. Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. This sounds great. It sounds like you've really grown the club this year. Of course, Mark is also our school committee rep, so he's just going to continue on after this. We see his leadership really coming out, so it's great. So thanks for being with us.
Actually, thank you for making a presentation. When I was in high school, there wasn't a Black Student Union. It was back in the 1960s, and I didn't get exposed to that until I was in college at MIT, and it was an incredible safe space because, you know, sometimes the environment can be challenging. So I'm glad to see you presenting before us. I'm glad to see that this is, is growing. And I actually have something to make you aware of. It just sort of dropped into my lap. There's an organization called Care for Equity, Coalition for Anti-Racism and Racism and Equity, and it's actually, one of the, one of the principals is actually a Concord resident. I know that there is a stipulated fellowships that are offered. The application process started in September, but it runs through the middle of this month. I'm glad to get the information to your advisor and to Andrew Namiki, Dr. Hunter and Shelley, so you can pass that on. Even if the window for this expires, there's still experiences to work with, either community-based, either in Concord or in Boston. And I know that there's, one of the principals is actually listening on, and on Zoom. I'll be glad to connect them with you to follow.
What does she mail to me, Michael, and I'll be happy to pass it along?
I'm glad to do that.
That's great.
Great.
Michelle's got to hand up.
Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. It was so good to hear you guys. I love what you're doing. I just wanted to ask, what type of activities do you guys do in your Tuesday morning meetings?
So the first meeting, I had like an incentivized breakfast for everyone that he was bringing up. Just go over, right now, we're going over our plans for the year, so we're definitely changing how we run things in the meeting. A lot of fundraising plans, a lot of plans for this meeting that you guys see. So that's what we've been talking about the last three Tuesdays that we've had, but hoping to do the Craydles to Crayons is next, and we're working with the library on doing a table of books that BSU members recommend, so.
That's awesome.
Awesome. Great to hear.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow your Instagram.
Thank you.
Yeah, same.
Yes, you can, do you want to pull up to the table, you guys?
It might be easier to, I don't know. Just stay where they are and finish.
Yeah. If you want a table, you can, you can pull that one over, or you can pull up to the chair, yeah. Sorry. It's a little awkward in the room.
I know. I don't know how much time you want to use.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. All right, so next up, we have, I am moving this out of order. So our CCHS students are up next because they're with us, and in case you have to leave to do homework, we would love to hear from you. So when you're ready to start, you know, the drill, you can share your screen.
Yes, so we shared the presentation with Dr. Hunter.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
If we have your email, do you have a CC, because we could always share it with you in the future, if that's easier?
Either way, either way, I'm.
I think coming through me is the easiest. I just need to know to.
Share it.
Find it. Yep, I see it.
I know, because sometimes when you guys are online, you share because you're online, so.
I think this year now we want to go in person. It's a little bit different.
I love that you're coming. You know, it's awesome.
And I will anticipate that going forward.
Is Maddie have a game today?
Maddie, yeah, she has a game for field hockey today, so she is, she's on varsity, so she will not, she's not here right now. She's playing.
Having a great season.
I know. Field hockey is really.
They're really great.
We won't do it in presentation mode, so we're going to.
That was fine, yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah. We'll do it that way. Okay.
Great, yeah.
Does that work?
Yes, and then.
I'll make it bigger. How's that?
Yeah, that's great.
Great.
Okay, so we're going to start talking about the seniors' sunrise, which is very exciting. I'm a senior this year, and so we've already had a lot of exciting things, like our last meeting, we were just talking about how we had the senior bake, or the senior breakfast and the car pictures and things. But we had, I think it was last Thursday, all the seniors got up at 5:30 a.m., and we met on the field at like 6:15 because the sun rose at 6:30, and it's really special. It's run by government, but all the seniors just come together, and it's so special. And there's like, only like three teachers out there, but it's just, it's such a sweet moment, and then everyone else just like goes out in their cars, and we all just get Dunkin' after or Starbucks, and we're all so tired the rest of the day, and the teachers all know because we're so, we're so tired. But we, I added a picture of Maddie and I, so your two CC reps, we took a picture together. But, yeah, it's a really special moment to watch that, that sunrise. Yeah, and now we're going to talk about Kicks for Cancer, which is obviously something to be talked about.
Just to add about, student government organized the seniors' sunrise, and it took like 10 different days with weather concerns. Just happy that we finally got it done.
It was perfect.
We're going to talk about Kicks for Cancer and Mindy Boost. They were a huge success. I think we hit $1 million mark, was it, this year, which is really exciting. Do you want to talk about the goal?
Yeah, so one of the most special moments, I went to both the varsity girls soccer and varsity boys soccer games, and that was so special. The crowd is just like ecstatic, like throughout the entire thing, and it was really special, but also really sad because the boys, the boys did lose their game, but we, we won one goal at one point. It was, but for some reason, the goal didn't go, but everyone was so happy that we got this goal, that the cannons are going off. I got covered in pink dust. It was so special. So that's, I think, what this photo is from.
Was it offsides?
It was offsides.
I don't know, I don't know soccer terminology, but for some reason it didn't work, and it was so sad. There's lots of booing, but that was just, it's so special because it feels like the crowd is so united and CC is all together, so, yeah.
So I talked about it last time, so we finally had our kicks ball, which is different from in the past, the Pink Dance. We chose to go in a different direction this year, student government, because our numbers were going down and people were losing interest. So we decided to go with a different venue. We used the Armory, and we changed the way that we did the dance and made it a ball, and it was a huge success. We were able to donate, I think, over $5,000 to.
Just from that night?
Yeah.
Wow.
Ticket sales, yeah, it was great.
Amazing.
And like, I bought a ticket, but I didn't even go, so I think it was great. It was really great, amazing thing. I was busy, but, yes. Then we also had, we had a very like kicks-themed weekend, and that Friday before kicks, we had a Fun Friday, which we have, I think, once a month at CC, and so that's really special because during the lunch blocks, the administration just sets up, like, and I think the parent association, I don't know exactly who runs it, but it was really fun because we had Pink Lemonade, and we had Pink Starburst and all these pink favorite things, and you see, there's also a bunch of games, so there, we put on that slide some games that people were playing. But that's just really fun, and it was getting people super excited for the pink ball, pink ball later, or the kicks ball, I should say, later that evening, and then kicks the next day. So, yeah.
So everybody had their pink on. Okay, so we had the class government pickleball tournament today. It was great. We had the same winners, I think, as Matt Bronberg.
Three years in a row.
Yeah, always the same. Yes, and they made like special t-shirts that said like, "Pickleball's Calling," so, yes. So that was a great success today for our early release Wednesday. Student government's trying to organize tournaments every single early release, so there's something to do after school before sports.
And then the other thing we're going to talk about is new organization of school events by, at CC. So before, it's been really chaotic at the start of the school year. It's all the clubs want people to join their, join the club, and so there's been all these emails to CC students, and so the, one of the leaders of Senate is actually coming together with Mr. Miller, I think it is, and the two of them are like making, like a email that we're sending out every single, I think it's weekly now. We just had our first one last week, but it's going to be able, it's going to streamline our events at CC and hopefully make it easier for students to figure out what events they want to be engaged in, and so it's going to include like big sales and fundraisers, but also just like first meetings or exciting events that are happening. So I think that will be great for student, the student body and for students to know about new events, so.
That is great, because I was getting a lot of emails.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about, very briefly, about vision of the graduate. I'm not sure if you guys know. Of course, yeah, so from a student's perspective.
Everybody needs to know about it, so we want to hear about it.
So from a student's perspective, I think the meeting, our first meeting that we had went great. The program's basically, it's a new project at CC talking about the ideal graduate from CC and that there's other pathways from graduating from CC and giving everyone, all students, the tools and skills that they need to graduate from CC. So, making it more equitable, yes. So it was me and three other students, and we're going to continue our meetings, so.
And it's students, parents, teachers, administrators, right?
I'm going to talk about it in my update, too.
I did see the picture.
I thought so. I had a feeling.
Queued me up really well, though.
We also wanted to talk about the exciting Unified Basketball game that was last Thursday, I think it was, and the stands were packed. I wasn't able to make it, but I had a friend from another town come. I don't even think, because I think it was against AB, and she's from LS, but she said it was really great and so exciting, and I'd just been hearing all about it, so that was a really exciting win for us. Yeah. And then, oh, yeah, also, I just wanted to speak to, because I'm also in Senate. Senate goes through the approval process of new clubs, and so new clubs come to us and they present, and we learn about them, and then we kind of talk about it, and we make the decisions whether this should be a new club or if they should merge with other clubs. And so this year, we're having an unprecedented number of clubs. We have 14 clubs in our queue right now. We're booked out until, I think, mid-December with clubs trying to present to us, which is kind of taking over our schedule because we had, we need to plan other events like the Spirit Assembly. But it's really great to see all of this leadership coming through, and a lot of them are community service clubs, which will be really great to hear about them and just hear about the different missions, and it's just, it's really nice to hear that CC students want to get involved.
Bob, we need more club money.
Speaking of clubs, Finance Investment Club had their first meeting, I think, was it, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
And they had 110 students.
Yeah.
So they had to actually switch the room that they're meeting in, so the clubs are going huge this year. I know we have like 10 more students in BSU just from the next, like, start of the year, so it's really big.
It just, I mean, I do have to just shout out our teachers on the clubs, because the club process, just so you guys know, the teachers pretty much volunteer on that first year of the club to make sure it's viable. So, you know, thanks to all our teachers that are advisors for all of these clubs that are not getting paid to do it, but they actually want the club to thrive and start, so just have to say that out loud.
Yeah, we're very grateful.
JSA also had their bake sale, so the Jewish Student Union, and they had a bunch delicious things there in the top, the bottom left corner. And I tried one of their like honeycakes, and it was super good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Bake sales are definitely back. BSU is having our first bake sale of the year on October 22nd, we're planning, so at our early release Wednesday.
Yes. Just two more club updates. We have Model UN, which has, I think, really ramped up this year, but they're doing a spooky movie night fundraiser, I think it's today, which is very exciting. And the Far East Association is celebrating, just celebrated the Mid-Autumn Festival on Monday night, which was really great. And then, or actually, I think it might have been Monday morning that they had it. And then the last thing we're going to just talk about is the college fairs, which is really exciting because I'm a senior, and so I've just been able to, every Thursday, stop by all the clubs, or the colleges that have stopped, that have come by, and they just all set up shop within the, outside the library, and that's been really great. So, yeah, very exciting energy at CC. I think everyone's really excited for the school year, and I don't know if you have anything else to add, but, yeah, we're looking forward to it all. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Great update.
I know, that is a great update. You guys have been busy. I know, the energy is great. It's a great way to start our regional meeting. We're like, yes, we have the students here. So thank you so much. We'll look forward to you at our next meeting in person, and you know that it's, it'll be later in November.
Yes.
So, so we'd love to have you anytime. You can come.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You can leave it.
You can leave it.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I will turn it to Dr. Hunter.
Great, thank you. So I have some highlights, and I'm very focused on the high school since this is a regional meeting. However, I'm going to start with a couple of updates that are more inclusive, and then we'll focus on the high school. So just updates on the antisemitism plan that we made this summer. Two really important things have rolled out over the last week. They are CPS-focused, but it's the precursor to other things that will roll into the high school. We had our first staff training yes, yesterday, Monday afternoon, with Facing History for the K5 staff, and it's the first of what we And it's the first of what we think will be a two-part series with all staff included. And we got survey results back, pretty much on the spot, through the Facing History portal, and eighty-seven percent of teachers felt it was really valuable, and are eager for more, and especially the application part in the classroom. It was really focused on history, and I think we all learned things, and the second part will be application. So that'll be at the middle school in November, and then the high school staff will participate in, I think, December. We also did our Playbook Initiative piece at the middle school, and I mentioned this as a high school meeting, because it is gonna complement what we do with the ninth graders. We had a Jewish-focused religious scenario today, with a swastika being found, and had students in small groups talking about all aspects of the impact of the swastika, the interventions, the, how do we prevent this, what harm is done, consequences, and a lot of just basic, do we all understand a swastika is a hateful symbol, and this is how it hurts people? So I was able to be there. Some really great conversations started among the students, so we feel like that was a successful launch, and was a big piece of our summer planning.
Can I add a comment?
Yeah, please.
My daughter's in sixth grade, she was part of the Playbook Initiative. I heard more about that, and what she learned, than I've heard all yours.
Wow, that's great. That's great. And they did a nice job. Also, because we have sixth graders who haven't done as much playbook, they might have had a taste of it in fifth grade. Some of the time was about what playbook is and the purpose, and I think that was a really beautiful compliment today. That's great, I will share that feedback. A lot of planning went in.
Sorry.
No, it's good.
So my wife did message Mr. Cameron back and forth about some of the language use. Was very responsive, and really appreciate the updates that were made.
Yeah, I think, and some of you know, because you're parents there, but we, both with the staff and the parent community, we are previewing everything at a high level. The teachers all saw what the agenda was gonna be and the topics. A lot of messaging of how sensitive this all is. Parents at the middle school, and teachers all saw the scenarios, the student peer leaders. We have more peer leaders at the middle school than we had before, which is hard to believe, it's over a hundred. So they were all trained in the peer facilitation, and then supported by adults today. So, great, that's great feedback, and we're continuing to make that progress. LGBTQ is also one of our areas of concentration in the training, especially department this year, and so we're working to build staff training on that, and have that lined up for November, December, and January at the different levels. So you'll hear more about that, but I just wanted to mention, we have a similar action plan, multi-year action plan, but it's really important to us, given the data we've seen, about how high-risk some of our students and those subgroups are, that we really need to tackle this really definitively, so. I'm gonna talk on Vision of a Graduate, which Mark referenced. So, that goes under the umbrella of, we are under an accreditation process at the high school. Our tenure review is actually gonna be twelve years since the last one, with a two-part process, and we had an introduction yesterday from the, from NESC to the staff, so it seems important, you all have the same information. They have modified it, I don't know, five or six years ago, so it's not just a come once, and the visiting team reads all your documents, and then checks off what you're doing. It's now meant to be a growth process. So, we still have to do all the documents in a little bit more condensed form, and there's key people now in place at the high school to do that, teacher leaders, et cetera. And then, they do a site visit in 2026, two years before the renewal date, and come and work with you on, what are your areas of strength, what are your areas of growth? Collaboratively, we pick three to five, no more than that, areas of growth we're gonna focus on in those two years. And then they come back in '28, and then look for evidence of what's, what kind of progress, as well as all the baseline things. So there's a, an array of things you must all be doing, and then there's all these principles and things we weigh ourselves on, and then look at what our top priorities are gonna be. Certainly, we're gonna be aligning this with the other planning and goal setting that we're doing, but we're actually excited about the process, and another chance to self-reflect and really set rigorous goals for ourselves, and look for growth. So more to come. I did wanna mention, Vision of a Graduate is a component of the accreditation, and it's meant to be this very iterative, very inclusive process of the skills, assuming the academics are in place. So it's not really about academics, about what skills do we want our students to have as they leave the high school. Critical thinking, collaboration, you can, you know, suppose what some of them are going to be. So these precursor planning sessions, both with focus groups, and then this design planning group that I sat in, Mark was there, and a number of others, are building toward that. There are three sessions coming up that we're inviting wide and broadly, we're hoping for hundreds of people, and we will be inviting some, but we also want the community at large to know. October 29th, January 20th, and March 11th, at 6:30 at the high school. There's forums in my newsletter last week, which is online. Emails are fine, if you wanna let me or Brian and Katie know that you're interested, but we're really looking for a wide range of both community members in the schools and far beyond the schools. So, just wanted to use tonight as an opportunity to share that opportunity. School committee is very welcome, you're about to get an invitation from me, and then we'll just have to make sure we're not violating open meeting law, which I don't think when you're in a setting like that, and we split you up into different groups, that's really possible, but we'll talk that through if a quorum, if you wanna come. You're gonna get that in an email, so you'll have the dates. So that's a big project, and a lot of work going on at the high school, and it's gonna carry us through the next three years. And other things that we're working on more imminently, I think I alluded, oh sorry.
Really quick question about that. You've talked about how, like, the different constituencies of people who are included. How many people are in that kind of core group?
There were forty of us there the last week.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, parents, students, a lot of faculty, because they're in a really important part of the discussion, administrators, but yeah, very inclusive and interactive.
And there were other parent sessions prior to that?
Yeah, focus groups.
There's a core group, but there were focus groups prior to that.
Yeah, and that happened for teachers and some other groups as well, so, there's this whole iterative path that we're following. Other more imminent changes and progress that we feel like we're making, I think I had alluded, we are about, for the first time, to offer AP and English in the fall. We're still working out the offerings and what they're gonna be, but it will be ready for the program of study in January, and we're excited that we're gonna give more opportunities for high achievement and high growth. We say that with a little caution, because we are not looking for kids to take five, six AP courses. So, we started a conversation on some parameters around that. We don't have that all figured out yet, but there will be some guidance or limits on what, and how much you can take. But it seemed really important that we make this next step towards opportunities and offerings for kids that have those humanity strengths, not because our teachers and courses aren't amazing already, but because we think we just wanna open all the pathways up. This will be grade twelve only. We wanna maintain what we're doing in the earlier grades, and also, kind of, kind of not drive kids towards those APs till a little later into high school.
Is that all AP, or just?
Just English. We don't, we don't really offer anything below junior year, which I believe in, because I think we want kids doing general core content with some differentiation prior to that, but I think we're making, making good progress in the English department. I can't say enough about the work they're doing to get us there, so. Route nine, I think Brian and Katie mentioned when they were with you in the spring, about work we're doing within the ninth grade academy on executive skills, and I just wanna say that's launched, and one day a week, the ninth grade students are meeting with their ninth grade academy teachers, and doing study skills. We're teaching them how to take notes. We're teaching them how to do things we somehow assumed they were gonna know how to do. And it just feels like a nice, strong start to the high school academic load that we're asking of kids with more direct instruction, so that they're ready for that. And that's been well received. They're doing amazing things, and those really creative ways to come at what sounds kind of mundane, it's not coming off mundane at all. Credit for Life, I know fiscal literacy has been a little bit of a topic in the, you know, one of our students wrote a piece for The Bridge, and I know Simon Cattado's invested in this, so are we. A few years ago, we had done what's called a Credit for Life Fair. The state is a champion of these, and sometimes offers little seed money to get them started. It really gives kids a life, you remember the game of life where you'd spin the wheel? And none of us ever play as adults, because it's too realistic. At least, I won't play it with my children. I'm like, no, no, I do that all day long. But you get a job, and you get expenses, and the kids come, and all of that. It's similar to that. The kids get a profession, they get housing, and various ranges of costs, expect, expected and unexpected income and expenses, and just have to navigate their way around the afternoon, and try to come out in the black. Their eyes open incredibly like, wow, where did that big paycheck go? And things just start to click. So, we're gonna try to get life back into that, and what we'd really love to do, Flex Block gives us a whole new opportunity on this. We'd really like to build it out to scale, and really sort of mandate it at some point, once we're really solvent and up and running. It's another great opportunity for the community, come into the building. Last time, we ran it into my previous district, and professionals within the community come out and sit at these stations that the kids are, you know, so if you're, if you're the veterinarian, we all have this, right? The pet has to go to the vet, and the bill's very big, but the veterinarian actually sits there and says, well, for that, you know, little injury on the paw, that's gonna be $500, please. And the kids are like, what? So, we're gonna try to make that community engaging as well. My last two updates, one is about internships. We're gonna really start promoting that, for especially seniors. We've always had a program, but it sort of sits sort of dormant. Kids almost have to initiate it, so we're kind of flipping that, and where we can, an internship fair, for different folks to offer internships, and give kids exposure to what the opportunities are. So, we don't have a timeline on that yet, but the high school's trying to get that up and running, hopefully somewhat aligned with course selection, so kids will know where the windows would fit.
Could they do the internship during the second semester? So not just at that last, like, couple weeks in April?
Right now, we're gonna try to aim for more full semester. But, it's a work in progress. We just wanna name that, on our work on multiple paths to success, we think there's a really big opportunity there that has been very understated for our students. And then finally, just, I think you're gonna wanna know this, as you're going to reapprove all these trips and travel, the signups are out for the trips, and so far, I have awarded $1,500 to three different students, and Sharon Young subsidy scholarship monies, to help students be able to access the trips. We all acknowledge $500 on a $5,000 trip feels too little, but it, it helps, and in some cases, it went toward the Quebec trip, which is a much more significant impact, but we are encouraging, kids are getting the information, families are getting the information, and actively applying to the fund. So, we're gonna keep working on keeping it fiscally solvent. At this pace, we're okay, because we've found little ways to subsidize it that have kept it afloat, but at least it's operational. Felt important to let you know that. So those are some highlights. A lot of great things going on.
Thank you, great things. I'm gonna be very brief with my update. Just a couple things to mention, the PA, PTG presence meeting was this morning. Carlisle will be included with our meeting, and I think that's a really great opportunity for Carlisle to be part of the K-8 discussions going into the high school. Let's see, the Select Board meeting last night, just of note to us, is there's a discussion about the special town election from this past summer, and some changes that they're gonna make to the process for that voter information packet. And you can watch that meeting, or look at my updates in the packet, I put those in there today. And then last night, thank you to Brian and Lori and Bob for going to the CPC meeting to discuss the Amandys Building. Brian will also be on tour this weekend at the high school campus, on the long weekend, so we really thank you for, you know, getting through that. And the Chair's Breakfast is next week, so I don't really have anything else of note. So that's it for me. And with that, we will move on to public comment.
I wanted to make a comment, if I could, on some of the goals that we adopted as a committee. We adopted as part of our goals, wanting to speak to incidents of hate and bias in town. We thought it was important enough for us to do that as a committee, that we set it as our goals, and I tried to reach out to both of you to add to our agenda, an opportunity to speak to the incidents that have happened in our community over the past two weeks, and that being the CCHSPA post, and the incident that happened at Kicks for Cancer.
So if I can just interrupt for a second, so is this a request to add something to our agenda tonight?
Well, I tried to ask you to add it to the agenda previously, but I wasn't able to, and we made this part of our goals, and we chose to make certain that we speak to these issues as part of our goals. And if we don't do that, we can only do that and make these statements as a body in an open meeting. If we can't come together to speak about them, when, when can we have that kind of conversation?
So I think if we look down to our discussion of our, if we can just table this, our discussion on statements from the school committee and the chairs.
From my understanding, from the agenda outlined, you said that we weren't gonna talk about incidents there.
No, that's not on the agenda for tonight. If you wanna request it for future agenda, you could do that.
I have requested for a future agenda. Requested to both of you twice, and to our vice chair, but been turned down. So if we're chosen to speak about these issues, we've made that part of our goals, how can we speak about them if we can't get it on the agenda?
What I requested to add statements from the school committee on the agenda, is to poll the group, to see if we wanna speak more to single incidents, or if we, if we don't wanna do that. So that's what we're gonna be talking about at F.
Well, I'll look to speak to it later then.
Okay. So, we're gonna move to public comment. So, our public comment period is a period of twenty minutes, and as a reminder, this is a meeting in the public and not with the public, so the school committee will not be responding to any comments. If you're in the room and you'd like to speak, you can submit a blue form to me, which I have some, and you'll be called to speak. If you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. And when called to speak, please take your name and address before you speak, and we will go every other, starting with a comment in the room, and then taking a comment on Zoom. So I'm gonna ask Lori to promote maybe the first two on Zoom, just so we can be efficient, and first up is Tuee Rogers. So you can come on up. You do the time.
I got it.
I'll stand to the side, so everybody can see. I'm Tuee Rogers, North Street in Concord, and-
You can actually sit, because we asked that you address comments for the chair, sorry. Did we talk about this at the Chair's Breakfast? Sorry.
All right.
It's just our process.
Fine, fine. And I just have to say, bravo to the Black Student Caucus and to the students reporting. I remember going to soccer games and tennis matches and loving it. I've been here for thirty years. I voted for every school that's been built, all five of them. But of course, I'm not here to talk about that joy and the joy they experienced, and I hope they keep experiencing. And Dr. Hunter, I hope you keep providing them with the opportunities to do that. I'm here to talk about the, I think, very clearly, the broken trust that exists right now between the school committee, alas, and the superintendent, that started last year at the town meeting. And I know you know what I'm talking about, when the almost unanimous town voted for naming this school the new middle school after Ellen Garrison. And it was, it was such a perfect opportunity in history. The 250th year of, you know, anniversary of our, the battle at the Old North Bridge. We were celebrating people whose voices hadn't been heard. This seemed like a perfect opportunity. The town voted for it. And then surprisingly, I went to the League of Women Voters meeting when you spoke up for naming it the middle school and you spoke for naming it the middle school. And somehow, it got named the middle school. And I think that was a real slap in the face to the town. I think you know that. People were stunned. Cause, that's the cause. That's where it began. The effect was that Alexa was voted out. She was the incumbent chair, and she was voted out. The town voiced its being upset and lack of trust. The amenities building was not voted down because of reporting in the bridge. It was voted down as a result of this lack of trust. And I think that we probably all know in our hearts that we're talking about a lack of trust that needs to be rebuilt. And since then, well, during this period, the Metco PDG dissolved itself for lack of collaboration, by their words, with you. And the, you know, ADL has filed a complaint against the school for not addressing anti-Semitic behavior. This breaks my heart. I mean, I'm much happier to come here and talk about the soccer team or the, you know, what the kids are doing. And I would like to do that. But all of you are volunteers. I serve on volunteer committees too. Thank you for serving. This is not personal. It's about translating what we as townspeople want to the school superintendent and trying to get the school to go forward with academic excellence, safety for the students, and kind of answering to the town.
Thanks, Tuey. That's.
So, I just wanna say, it's not personal. It's about what you're doing. You need to talk up a lot more about what's happening with anti-Semitic behavior and bullying.
Thank you. Your three minutes are up. Thanks.
And have a public forum, please.
So, online, we have Andy Fall.
Hello, Tracy. Thank you. To the members of the school committee, Dr. Hunter and the Greater Concord Carlisle and Boston community, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Andrew Fall, a science teacher and president of the Concord Carlisle Teachers Association, and I would like to speak in support of Dr. Hunter. Recently, as you all know, Dr. Hunter was the target of an outrageous and potentially criminal act of intimidation and harassment. And all members of the community should express their outrage at such unacceptable attacks. Under Dr. Hunter's guidance and now at the school committee, teachers and administrators have worked tirelessly to create conditions for all students to grow and develop confidently and securely, regardless of their background or identity. And to all the families who are hurting, please know that we do hear you. We will continue to seek opportunities to make CCHS a more welcoming place, and you should continue to insist that we do that. But please don't think for a second that we're not engaged in that work or that our leadership has shirked that responsibility. Dr. Hunter and our faculty care deeply about these values. And there's no school leader better suited to take us through the current challenges we face and lead the district through this moment. The CCTA and Concord Carlisle faculty stand ready to continue to work with the school committee, Dr. Hunter, school leaders, and the larger community in creating a more inclusive and welcoming environment for all of our community members. And I can attest that work has already begun. I thank you for your time today and look forward to our continued work together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Margaret Schumacher.
I want to also say how positive you guys have been tonight about all the, you know, the soccer teams and the Black Union and everything, and very positive stuff. I do want to.
If you can talk into the microphone. Thanks.
So, thank you all for your volunteer work on this. It's so much work, I can't imagine. I want to read a letter from the Concord Bridge, because I feel like with all this wonderful stuff going on, there's a huge elephant in the room. And it's really hard for me to move on. So anyway, I know for many to move on. And this is the letter I'd like to read. And it starts, the heading is "Criticism of Hunter Warants Serious Notice." It starts with a quote, "Nothing strengthens authority so much as silence." Does anyone know who wrote that? I didn't. Leonardo da Vinci. "More and more, we are hearing that anyone who raises questions or offers legitimate criticism of our school superintendent is engaged in bullying or even hate speech. How did this come to be? When exactly did scrutiny into the words and actions, or lack of actions, of our leaders become an act of bullying? As taxpayers, do we not have the right to question those in power whose healthy salaries we pay? Isn't questioning authority and seeking some level of transparency and accountability one of the hallmarks of civil democratic society? I hope so. That's the way we're taught from the beginning. There is not time here to review this administration's repeated failure over the last three years to genuinely respond to the needs, concerns, and safety of our various minority students, as well as our school community in general." To cite just a few examples, it's the ongoing, essentially no-confidence vote by Metco, the avoidance of dealing with repeated hate graffiti in a timely and proactive manner, the failure to honor the clear wishes of the community over, which was recently said, over the naming of the Ellen Garrison Middle School. Or just recently, the federal civil rights complaint detailing, quote, "detailing rampant anti-Semitic abuse," end quote, in the Concord Carlisle High School that was allowed to take root and persist. When a leader is criticized over time and that criticism is backed up with clear examples and ongoing evidence of poor or questionable performance, then that leader and the people who she or he is representing should stop and take serious notice and not try to dismiss it by calling it bullying or spending even more taxpayer money by hiring a PR firm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, online, we have Matt Kilmartin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Matt Kilmartin. I'm the parent of a sophomore at Concord Carlisle. Feel my comments are probably a little bit more relevant than some of the previous comments, considering I have students in the school and very familiar exactly what's happening at the school versus what's red in the bridge and talking about the naming of the middle school from a couple of years ago. I couldn't be more happy with the administrations and current school committee and all the hard work that's happening. Talking about the change of the AP work even stated, specifically some of the, all the training you're doing, sensitivity training and whatnot in light of some of the incidents has been remarkable. The one thing I specifically wanted to praise tonight was the work that happened this summer when the Doug White fields and the upper turf were completely redone. That was done in record time. There was a lot of feedback that those turf fields needed to be replaced. And the school committee and administration listened to the feedback and really advocated with the town to get those done. Why that's relevant for some of the people listening is nothing to do with the naming of a school building. It has to do with mental health crisis, which is really a lot more of a challenge for adolescents today than what the name of a building is. And the school committee really prioritizes the whole student, the learning, mental health challenges, and knows that physical activity and exercise and whatnot really helps with depression and anxiety. And getting that done helps with the soccer teams. It helps with all the students to be able to have physical activity. Actually helps with thousands of kids that participate as part of Concord Carlisle youth soccer. So it's great that the school committee pushed to get that done. And I'm confident that without their advocacy, it would have been delayed and it wouldn't have happened. So, really appreciate them prioritizing our students' mental health and really all the hard work you're doing to make our school system one of the best in the state. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Suzanne Kelleher.
Hi, Suzanne Kelleher. It's 244 Lindsay Pond Road in Concord. So last spring, my family and nine other families went through a very problematic and confusing MIAA association. So that's the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association's chemical health process with the CCHS administration. In the student handbook that you guys have reviewed, I guess, this year already, you'll see a portion of the policy on page 29. So our policy allows for bystanders. These are people that are, find themselves at an event where there's alcohol, but that are not drinking. And so our policy allows for bystanders. That's not, it's widely known and it's undisputed, but it's not mentioned in the handbook. Proving yourself a bystander, we were informed during our process in the spring, requires you to breathalise to prove your innocence. So if you're at the event, you must breathalise in order to be seen as a bystander. This is not documented in the handbooks either, nor is it part of the training that's done as part of the athletic preparation for athletic activity that usually the A.D. or, I don't know if it's the A.D. or the coach, does. So, it seems strange that this is the case. Usually, if an officer sees some sort of erratic behavior at an event, they'd ask a person to breathalise rather than asking a student of 15, 16, 17 years old to demand one from an officer. So, I guess, all of the families involved found ourselves in this, like, confusing situation where the policy that was written didn't define sort of the circumstances that we were being measured against. And the whole school review process was rushed. Kids were determined to be in violation before the police report was available, which is obviously a significant due process violation. And sort of explaining that to our seniors that were graduating, that they're, you know, that they had not experienced due process, that our policy requires due process, was upsetting as a parent. I think in all of this, we can do better. So this, we should do better, so this does not happen again, because next time, it could be your child that's at that event. I will try to meet with all of you. I've met with some of you. It's easy to show that the policy is unclear as it's currently written. And I will email the school committee requesting an agenda item to discuss it further. You know, I can't change my own child's circumstance, but I hope that I can fix it for the rest of you, because the way it's currently done is not correct. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Online, we have Wendy Holt. She's been promoted. Hey, Wendy? If you can unmute. Okay, looks like she, oh, there she is.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I thought, whoops, I thought that happened automatically. Wendy Holt, 30 Dover Street in Concord. I'm here to speak about the school committee's response to the complaint on behalf of student A that was submitted to the Office of Civil Rights at the Department of Education due to the anti-Semitic bullying he experienced. That has already had reputational damage to Concord Carlisle schools and to the, to our community, I believe. In addition, of course, to the harm that was done to student A. And it seems like this kind of situation has the potential for some legal repercussions. So given the seriousness of the issue, I'm wondering why the school committee is, has not been looking back to understand what went wrong in addressing the bullying of student A. Clearly, we can understand there are limits to what information can be shared, but so far, we've really heard only the perspective of student A and his family. What is the school's perspective? What strategies were tried and what impact did they have? What actions didn't work? The complaint states that student A requested a restorative justice approach, but this did not happen. Why? Are there barriers that constrain the ability of the school to respond? I also was surprised that a few weeks ago, when Dr. Hunter presented her plan for combating antisemitism, there wasn't more discussion of that. It was wonderful to hear some of the first steps that are happening, and I'm very pleased with them. But what I would say is that the primary elements of the plan are emphasizing prevention, which is important, and I endorse that. But I don't think that's sufficient. Education is not enough. Some middle schoolers weaponized what they learned about the Holocaust to give their soccer teams anti-Semitic names and to bully Jewish students. Complaining to the school and working them was not enough. Student A and his parents were actively communicating with the school and requesting corrections without success. And I think this gets to this issue of trust. If children in the schools and their parents don't trust that submitting complaints will lead to effective interventions, the other things will not matter. And to rebuild the trust, we need to see you, the school committee, engage openly with these issues among yourselves, with Dr. Hunter and our staff, and with the community. While some of these discussions will be painful and tense, working through them can help build a foundation of trust that will allow us to work together to make a difference in the lives of vulnerable students. We can and must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last comment for tonight, Court Booth.
Thank you very much. Court Booth, 144 Wright Road in Concord. I want to talk very quickly on two items in your agenda. One is in regard to the trips. Some of you will know that for many years, prior school committees have been deeply concerned about access to these trips because of the significant costs. And we heard tonight that Dr. Hunter is well aware of that and sensitive to it as well. So I'm here to commend any and all efforts by the teachers to try to rein in the costs and make the trips more accessible, because we don't want these opportunities to actually divide kids. We want these opportunities to bring kids together. I thought it would be derelict of me to not speak about this until I stopped by the Sharon Young Fund to make a donation. So just a heads up for you folks, the donate button doesn't work today. I tried on a couple of different browsers. But I would like to promote, again, the Sharon Young Fund, which does help, albeit in a modest way, but in an important way. Secondly, because it's now budget season, some of you in the room will recall that when I was on this committee, I sought out information on the extent to which we invest identifiable money toward equity and inclusion within our budgets. And I was told that that was impossible. And the reasoning sounded wonderful. Equity and inclusion is embedded everywhere in our budget, everywhere you look. And it's so granular and so everywhere that it can't be really, really quantified. And I want to challenge that and say, if indeed this district does zero-based budgeting, and if you're starting now for fiscal '27, I think that there can be eyes on the investments made and the goals associated with equity and inclusion. And I'd love to see this school committee and this administration give that a try, because I think we all agree, or at least espouse, to our goals around equity and inclusion. And budget is one of the very few prerogatives that this school committee has to move a lever to make change. And I would hope that you exercise that responsibility. You heard Mr. Connery tonight say that there are reductions that happen before you ever see the superintendent's recommended budget. I think that's wrong. I think this school committee deserves to see what the educators throughout the school districts bring to the administration as their perceived needs. Then, then and only then, should the administration say, here are our best recommendations for the reductions that should occur. But I think what we need to see is the soup before we see it distilled for us. And I don't think it should ever be distilled and reduced for a school committee. I believe you should see the whole picture and then be able to witness what the administration has done by way of reductions. I'm not opposed to these reductions. I think visibility is important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're close to public comment. And with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. So. Oh, sorry. Let's share.
I move to approve the consent agenda for October 8 through 25.
Wait a second.
I need to move to remove something from there.
Oh.
And I went to remove some things or get some clarity on others.
Okay, one withdraw your motion.
I'll withdraw.
Thank you.
All right. Can we move the September 10th minutes?
Yep.
That's one of mine, too.
Okay. Anything else?
The August 27th, just listed in the minutes, it's workshop minutes, not joint school committee workshop minutes. The August 25th, at least our minutes, is actually September 25th Communication Work Group minutes. And I believe that is it for that.
So the 25th minutes, the 27th minutes?
Correction, at least in our agenda, for the August 27th minutes, the correction of, in our agenda, the August 25th Communication Working Group minutes, that was actually Sept- September 25th, 25. Date on the September 9th Communication Group minutes, that was September 8th. The error that both Sandeep and I see in the September 10th minutes.
So just, I think the easiest thing to do is, we're just, let's just remove anything that we have corrections on, and then you can send forth the corrections, and we'll discuss it the next meeting. So if we can just, if you could just give me which number, which letters we're removing, sorry.
B.
B, yep.
B as in boy, E as in egg, G as in golf.
Yep.
H as in helo.
Okay. And if they're, just, just for the future, if they're like small corrections, you can send them to me, and then we can, we can get them fixed up before the meeting, then approve them to the meeting, but if it is content, then you would just provide a change, that you were looking for a change? Does that help?
So that content, should we discuss in public, or?
Content we discuss in public. Yep. But like, if it's a minimal, like, you know, date change, or something like that, content, and if you have a proposal for a change, we would discuss that in public.
Okay.
So why don't we approve everything else? So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of items B, E, G, and H.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. So those four items, we're going to table till our next meeting, and if you want to send me the changes or modifications, and then we'll put it out to the committee.
But we need to discuss that, though.
What? In our next meeting.
We need to discuss that. Okay. So, sorry.
Sorry.
If it's, if it's content change, should we still email, or?
You can email, and then I'll, I'll give it to everyone with the change
Got it.
in the agenda overview, so you'll get it with the change, and then we'll discuss that change at the next meeting. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep, so Mike will send the change, we have the same change.
Yeah.
Okay, great, perfect, all right. So just to be efficient tonight, all right, so we've approved it, okay? And with that, we'll go to correspondence, and everyone has received the correspondence, you know, in the past couple of weeks, and I discussed this at the CPS meeting, we've probably had like 10 to 12 pieces of correspondence from the public. And then we'll move on to our discussion, and I will turn that over to Bob, and he is going to run our budget workshop.
Would it be okay if I reordered B and A?
Is the committee willing to reorder B and A?
Oh, allow it.
Will allow it? Okay, great.
All right, I have that file open.
Can we have the Tylenol for the headache it will induce?
Okay, so I'm going to start with the response to Concord Finance Committee's guidelines data request. A lot of the information is similar to, some of the information is similar to what I shared for CPS, I'm not going to go through the items that are fairly similar.
Carla wasn't here.
Oh, that's right, okay, so I will go through everything again. Sorry about that.
But Carla also has the packet of materials, so if they have any questions, they could maybe do it that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I have the memo on the screen. I've highlighted our zero-based budget process to anybody who, basically is familiar with budgets, a lot of districts do more of a inflationary increase for certain items. We do zero-based, we look at every position, we look at every supply line, and those are budgeted at the high school, since we're talking about the region, by department heads for different subject matters in coordination with the school principals. A lot of the central items are budgeted by my team in partnership with transportation, facilities, insurance, things like that. Look at current enrollment levels, so it is truly zero-based. We're in the midst of that process, we just kicked it off yesterday, sent the budget packages out to each of the principals in each school. Our five-year projections, I'll go over at the end of this. In terms of spending level changes, one of the things, we don't necessarily anticipate a lot in the way of spending changes, we do, I do anticipate that we'll have to monitor our building maintenance needs and costs as the building gets older, and would expect some slight and gradual increases in this area. It may also affect our capital plan as well. I've shared the FY '25 year-end update with them, just linked to what we provided to the school committee at the September 10th meeting, I believe it was. I'm not going to go over that again, you've seen that previously. And the FY '26 budget update, we'll be doing our first update for this year at one of our next meetings. The top issues for the high school, similar to for CPS is maintaining our high quality in district special education programs, that will be and continues to be a priority. It has actually helped us in some ways financially, too, in terms of budget relief, we've had more students enroll in our programs, providing us offsetting non-resident tuition funds that we can use to cover some existing staff costs. Enrollment projections is something that's, I would say, a significant issue. Both, it's more of an impact at the, at the high school, because it has a disproportionately large impact, as you'll see in our presentation, on the assessments, more so even than our spending, assuming our spending is within a moderate range. So I'm going to share that with you, that is an issue that we want to try to get information out to the town, so they're aware of the impact. You know, the growth in this area, to some extent, we certainly in the schools can't control, but we want to share the information that we see and what impact it might have on town assessments. For capital, I don't know that we need to refer to it to tier one and tier two for the high school, but those are the terms Concord uses. We're going to be developing a capital plan this year, really for the first time. We wrote a memo last year outlining what our priorities were. The school's now 10 years old, the new school building there, there are going to be some needs, we're aware of a couple of them, don't anticipate anything surprising coming up in our first plan. Our focus in the near term will be on the next five years, and we'll present that through the capital planning process. Our first presentation is November 20th to Concord Finance Committee.
Is there a standard, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a standard way to present that information to the finance committee? Are they sending out templates, or is it to us to kind of put that to? Okay.
Yeah, it's...
They haven't provided a standard format, so the town has one way they've presented, and ours is a little different, and then we've, you know, last year we combined them, which was great, so...
Yeah, I love the combination last year, and it's really effective, and kind of like town meeting, maybe we could work towards like common templates, everyone's presenting the statement.
Yeah. The enrollment levels, we talked about, we have, you know, the question really, I think, was driven by just a question of what's our capacity to absorb additional students, so our responses here attempted to address that. We also shared a study that was done related to MCI and the potential for additional housing going there, and what the impact might be, so that's information we've shared in here as well.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry, the capacity of the high school specifically, is that physical capacity for like fire and security?
Yeah, the building was built for 1,200.
Okay, so it's nothing to do with class sizes, it's physical people, okay. And that's students, regardless of how many teachers are there?
Yeah.
I have a question on that, too. Historically, and I'm thinking mostly about the Prescott, like, are those, are there projections of buildings? Was that, was that an accurate predictor of enrollment?
I don't know that it perfectly was, and can we just divert to this for a minute? And I don't know if you want to bring your other slides up, since it's a very high interest topic.
I know, I know.
Yeah, he's got other slides, too, because we want to do the...
I'm happy to wait, I wasn't sure which bucket this fell in.
Did you hear this come from the MCI?
Yeah, why don't I just talk on that piece, and then we'll go to the Carlisle Concord pieces. I worked with the consultant that the town of Concord hired for the MCI study that was just done, was very focused on school projections and enrollment, so they reached out to me, we did, they did the work, I provided the data. We talked a lot about the Prescott, because it's a nice barometer for us, and what I found, and I've had other complexes in my other districts that didn't play out this way, was that those apartments have drawn more families and more students. Their demographic in there really ranges from the 40B subsidized housing, all the way to the visiting MIT professor who's here for a year, and brings their family from some other part of the world. So I think the nuances of that play out a little differently here than they do in other communities. So they really heard some of my anecdotal story and said, well, give us the actual numbers. What they predicted, without seeing our data, was a far less enrollment coming out of the Prescott than the numbers we actually gave them. And it helped them to modify their formulas for the upcoming complexes, which I thought was really valuable. So the data they've given here is based on their formula, that they use standardly, with some adjusting for the patterns we saw coming out of the Concord complex.
Do you feel like the projections that you've put in here are as accurate as we could, I mean...
We worked with a professional who ran their formulas and accounted for our local context, I think that's as good as it gets. I know we're going to want to talk more with Carlisle, as you have your discussions of potential options here, being on the T-line and all, so we probably should talk more similarly about the Carlisle impact.
Since we're on the topic of, I guess, potential enrollment, the competition unit, was that just for the Prescott, or neighboring towns as well?
We focused, they focused primarily on that as an apartment complex, they did all sorts of housing studies here in town, that they based their formulas on, and then the piece they didn't really have as accurate was how the rental complex impacted the schools, at least in our actual lived experience there. So that was the part I provided, they did all the rest. So that's where those numbers come from in terms of capacity, you can see at the high school, we have some space-ish, I mean, we've been much higher than we are right now, and now we're kind of at the capacity of what it was built for, a little bit under, so...
That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
I don't know when we publish this stuff, do we want to publish it in terms of physical capacity, like what's the maximum amount of kids, or do we believe as a community should, you know, per...
We were up well over 1,300, and it was really tight.
And I heard anecdotally, it was too tight.
It was too tight, yeah, we didn't have any flex spaces.
So I hate to publish that as a capacity, and if...
So 1,200 comes from the MSBA documentation that built the school, so we can talk if you want to rethink how to message that.
Yeah, I don't know, I think we should, but...
Yeah. Good points, for sure.
When is this due? Yesterday?
Their meeting's on the 6th.
Yeah, I think we give them all the data and help, I mean, they're going to chew through it like we are, and try to figure out what it really means, but the more we give them, the more to chew on, so, thanks, Bobby.
Related to that, we did variable cost analysis, like if there is growth, what would...
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Of course. Can you just sort of like highlight what, what does, like, I don't have kids in the high school, what does 1,300 feel like? What is that?
Yeah.
If you get past that projected enrollment, what are the consequences?
We had very little flex space. So for example, if you have a fire and there's two classrooms offline, you can't find space to reallocate them somewhere, there's no classroom spaces at all available in the course of the entire school day, and you're really, like, that was where we could feel it loud and clear, was that every single space was being utilized every period, and the juggling it took to cover that was tangible. Some of our SED programs really needed bigger spaces than they had, and they were getting really, anchor was like squished into one classroom, when really they needed two. Rivers, for example, and the type of experiential learning that they did, they were in their third-floor room, and now they've been able to spread out into an art room and have two really amazing spaces, and flex through with that. Lunch is a piece, you know, the bigger the capacity at lunch, the longer it takes us to get kids through, and the more, more we have to do. I don't know if we could have gone to two lunches the way we have now, if we were still up well over 1,300, we kind of had to wait for that to play out, so, you know, it just has this trickle-down thing, yeah.
Thank you.
So in terms of how this relates to budgets, you know, again, the way the Finance Committee, one of the things they wanted to look at was if enrollments grow, what does that do to your cost outlook? It's not a one-for-one, it's not a similar ratio to your existing costs, because you get some leverage, we're not going to have an additional principal, we're not going to have an additional building maintenance and all the infrastructure. So we went through the same exercise, again, this is an exercise, and this is an estimate of what could happen if we had an increase in 25 high school students. And we, often in the high school, we see increases or reductions in quarter FTE increments, like we might need an additional section of a class, and one section equates to a quarter FTE. So we, for 25, assumed we might need to add a quarter section, whatever subject matter it might be needed in, and assumed $100,000, which would be, might be a mid-range on the salary table, that would be $25,000. We might need one quarter special education tutor, that's based on kind of the ratio of special education tutors we have to the overall student body now, and that would be about $11,000 for a quarter FTE. We assumed some consumable materials would be needed per student, about 200 per student, that would be $5,000. And so for, in summary, for an increase of 25 students, that'd be about $41,000 on a $40.4 million budget, about a 0.1% increase. Again, you know, these are estimates, again, one student could go out of district, and that by itself might be $155,000.
Same caveat we said to the Concord Committee, it all depends who comes in and where they fall, and what they need.
In terms of education reform and mandates, this isn't really a mandate, per se, but we're aware that Title I funding at the federal level is discussion and reducing that, at the rates that they've discussed reducing it, it'd be a fairly small impact, typo there, it should be to CCRSD, the impact might be $5,000 to $10,000. Pension and OPEB information is provided in the year-end report that I previously presented to the school committee, and I've included a link to that for them, to my report previously. Out-of-district tuitions, you can see the trend here, and we have a different picture than at CPS, we've seen a spike last year, and this is something we talked to, we saw early, it happened after the budget process had just concluded, we had some students that, one moved in, another one out of district. We worked with the Finance Department, and out-of-district tuitions were held out of guideline in last year's budget process, which really enabled us to meet guideline without impacting class sizes, without impacting other kind of core educational programming. We are going to get, and I'll talk to more about, in the projections, about what the impact is kind of going forward, which is beneficial, but by excluding it from the guideline, we're able to have some stability to get through a bump, and there's going to be a little bit of a lower increase next year. I shared, in response to their information, I've shared, request, I've shared information on kind of typical costs of placements, what the range is, in some cases, it might be prorated with another district, or it might be just for a portion of the year, so that's why some of those numbers are pretty low. In terms of circuit breaker data, you can see, we did get extraordinary relief in FY ' '24, which is why that number is fairly large, 1.6 million. There was also special legislation, you might recall, existing school committee members, that we had 14% private school special education increases that hit us a couple of years ago, and there was some surplus aid that we received in FY '24 that contributed to that 1.6 million to offset, offset that. That and extraordinary aid. FY '25 is back down to, we don't have extraordinary aid, we don't have surplus aid.
Can I just add, we're getting notices, and this is a very big topic among the superintendents and SED directors right now, we're getting notices from the out-of-district placements of their expected increases for next year, there's no guardrails on them. We're seeing numbers come in in double digits, and our jaws are all dropping, because it's happening in lots of settings, so I expect there's going to be a lot of lobbying and legislative discussion asked of that, because the districts are really going to struggle to keep up with some of these significant increases of 12, and we'd want it 23% yesterday, I think.
How are they justifying those?
Staffing, yeah. Staffing. Yeah.
That's why, I mean, Bob, I think you can model circles around me, and so take that as a solid assumption. But I just...
I'll just take that. That's okay.
Have you looked at our, you know, CPS, CCRSD budget divided by 1,850 students? It's, what, 30 grand a child? And I understand there's fixing variable, and you're really focusing on the variable, but grants are drying up. Things are getting very expensive. I would hate to give this to the FinCom on a, like, a conservative estimate, or...
Aggressive, yeah.
Aggressive estimate, and I'd rather go in more conservative because I think the cost per student is actually going to somehow be higher than this.
That's a fair point, and I, I'll comment on that during the projections.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't try to get aggressive. We try to say, what do we think it's going to be in the projection process as of now?
Right. And you did it for 25 students here, but I just assume you go to 50, and the number goes much higher.
Certainly.
Yeah, in terms of the variable cost, I mean, this is the first time we've done this.
But even if the cost goes up at that point, right, because like, then you're maybe more transportation, like, you know, I don't know. You might need to buy more...
Yeah, at a certain point, you get, you get past a certain, for 25 students, it's one thing. For 300 students, well, I don't know if we could fit 300 students. But, you know, within CPS, we might have to add a bus at some point, but I think we have some capacity to absorb that. Maintenance costs, I don't think are going to change. We're not going to heat or spend anymore.
Right.
I mean, maybe more, students tend to break things, so there might be a little bit, little bit more maintenance.
Yeah, and again, you could spend another 40 hours on this model, and, you know, maybe it's, you know, more decimal point, more accurate. That's not word that I get at, but anyway.
The modeling's really tricky. We were just trying to show good faith effort that we...
Again, I'm not questioning.
Illustrate it, yeah.
It seems right to me.
In terms of comment, they asked about benefits of including or excluding it from Finance Committee guideline. The only, that's up to the Finance Committee. The point that we wanted to make was that regardless of the FinCom's decision, we don't plan to reallocate savings from out-of-district tuitions to other items. You know, if we were funded to handle a bump last year, if we have a decrease this year, we're going to budget the decrease. So that's just the point that we wanted to make. This certainly was a benefit last year, and we talked to what that was in terms of maintaining our core programs, our class sizes. We didn't have to reduce certain course offerings because, because of that. The Ripley, okay, so debt service is in here as well. They've requested that debt service. You can see, the way we borrow, we typically, well, every debt that we have right now, we have level principal, and so your interest payments will decline. So that's why these, you'll see these are declining over the years pretty significantly. We've made an assumption to pay off the landfill. So the landfill ban is paid off this year. The access road, we've assumed we're going to pay off over the next four following years. We could pay it longer, but you can see even doing that, we still have healthy reductions in debt as we move forward.
And just for new members, the landfill is the area at the high school that's kind of empty when you drive in from Walden Street? It was where the cap was?
Mm-hmm.
Cap is?
Cap is, sorry. Was built, maybe was built, but is.
On the Walden Street entrance on the left, that big field.
Yeah, the skate park.
Skate park.
Exactly.
Yeah.
The Ripley information, we also, we were asked to share this information with the land use committee, basically on our staff and the spaces that we have at Ripley. So that's all here. That's a long-term project from the town in terms of land use. We're not requesting anything specific, but we did just share this information in terms of costs, staffing, and spaces that we use. We've also shared information on what the consultant's report had on recommended capital items. Some of these are actually smaller in operating items, but we included everything here. And you can see, those are fairly large numbers. And again, I talked about this with Concord Public Schools. Some of these are recommendations that we don't necessarily think we need to do. Some of them, we have some systems, like the boilers were end-of-life five years ago. They're well-made and still moving along.
Cross your fingers when the heat comes on in the next couple of weeks here.
And at one point, we looked at replacing them with, with a different system, and we ended up pulling that back. The cost ended up, we would have needed an electrical upgrade. The boilers themselves, replacing is just one component. If we did that, we'd have to look at asbestos mitigation as well. That's what make, that would just change the cost profile of that project. And, you know, we, we'll look at specific needs we have with respect to capital. I mentioned during Concord Public Schools' presentation here, you know, we recently put in an order for HVAC for the server room that was part of our FY '26 capital plan. You know, $15,000 to protect over half a million dollars' worth of equipment was kind of a no-brainer. There's some roof areas that we might need to do some targeted repairs on, and just patch leaks and things like that to buy us time on that. The committee also asked us for the impact of the close of the shelter. It had less of an impact on Concord, Carlisle Regional School District and the high school. The majority of students at the shelter were at Concord Public Schools, typically at Willard or the elementary grades. There was a small number of students, I think, it varied from three to five. We had some homeless transportation costs to transport students to their home district that elected to continue their schooling in their home district when they resided at the Concord Shelter. That was about $60,000. We'll get reimbursed that later this year, and that will come into Concord, Carlisle's general fund revenue budget and eventually roll into E and D. The grant funding for homeless, for the shelter, was, in supporting students attending CCHS, was 80, just under $85,000, substantially less, it's about, than, than was, than we received at CPS. We use those funds to support and cover the cost of a tutor and a reading specialist. As a, and as a side note, there is an additional student that relocated to a shelter in another town, and they elected to continue their schooling in Concord, which is their right. So we'll be responsible for some transportation costs this year to the tune of about $18,000. And we'll end up getting reimbursed for that in FY '27.
And that's full reimbursement?
It's not guaranteed, but it typically is pretty close to full.
Okay.
It's definitely improved over the last few years. There's additional information here on legal settlements, what we've paid in attorney fees, and these are both related to just general legal counsel and also specifically special education. So we've shared that in response to their request. And we've shared our strategic priorities from our plan, and again, the circuit breaker example, just as a reference for people who have questions about circuit breaker. Are there any questions? Oh, and if not, I'll jump into the presentation of the projections.
Any questions?
So no questions on this just yet, but when you do present in December, right?
Yes.
I think it would be good to see a pie chart that talks about the, you know, where the allocations with regards to our strategic priorities.
Okay.
I think, if it's cool, if you have the strategic priorities listed, right?
And so when we get further into budget season two, we're going to get, you'll get it at the thousand level, and then you'll see all the background around it. So you're looking for...
Excellent. So around the, when you present in December or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we've, we've shared information. I know, you know, we've talked about, you know, DEIB, for example. We did share some information on that, but like, that's not all-inclusive. There are kind of core, core budget, core, just our core work is DEIB-related. But we do have specific line items for the budget in that, and, you know, that's one. Wellness, there's certainly specific items that may be in the counseling area. But it would be harder to say, like, what percent of my time, what percent of Dr. Hunter's time relates to those types of things.
I wasn't necessarily looking at that level, right?
Yeah.
But if we do have, you know, it's saying we put money where our mouth is, right?
Yeah.
This is a priority, and we're actually investing in it.
Yeah.
And if there is a delta, that's, you know, showing that we're spending more.
Yeah.
Good.
There's some sub, yeah.
We do try to, we do certainly try to map it. And then there's, you know, some of the things I reported out on tonight actually don't have a cost associated. Us adding AP actually has minimal to no cost. We'd probably have to buy some textbooks at some point.
Root nine.
This root nine, credit for life, like, really tiny costs, if any. So those, those are harder to track because it's, thankfully, not fiscally impacting us.
Well, you think about, like, root nine has a huge impact on your 309 graders, but it really doesn't cost us anything by the impact and the priority towards wellness and, you know, getting kids ready for their next step.
But a bigger fiscal item like the literacy program at the elementary, that we tracked very loud and clear of that being about our efforts to, it is equity-based, any tier-one improvement is, and then obviously improving our evidence-based approaches. So, more to come. You're on the right track, for sure.
Okay. So on to projections?
Yep, on to projections.
So here's the five-year projections for the high, for the regional school district. And I'll go through, this is the summary level first, and then, you know, in terms of how we came to these numbers, I'll talk a little bit more about. But, big picture, we're projecting a fairly modest increase for next year of 2%, 2.2% overall in our expenditures. And then in future years, 2.8, 2.8, 2.5, 2.3. And again, the further out we go, the less confidence we have. Things happen quickly in schools, and three months from now, these things might look a little bit different even. So the format we have for this is to look at our total expenditures, look at our funding sources, and then arrive at what our general fund budget is because we can offset some of those expenditures through those other funding sources. We're anticipating fairly steady funding on grants. The revolving funds, fairly steady as well. In circuit breaker, we're anticipating a bump in FY '27. And the way I've projected circuit breaker, I've also, I've kind of leveled it a bit. In '27 and '28, we anticipate receiving a bit of a spike because of the number of placements we bumped up last year and in this year's budget. And then as people age out, which will happen in next year FY '27, we anticipate lower revenues in FY '28. But we are going to try to basically allocate our circuit breaker funds that we receive in a, in a way that avoids us going up and down on the general fund budget impact and the assessments to the towns. And we'll talk more about that as we go through the budget process, but that's kind of the idea in this projection. So looking at that, basically the difference between the, the overall expenditure increase of 2.2 for FY '27 and 1.6 for the general fund is, is that we're, we're basically going to utilize more circuit breaker funding. And when we look at revenues, this is actually good news. We've typically had pretty static chapter 70 revenue. We have a little bit of a bump this year. And you can see the increase from '26 to '27. The net assessments to the town in total is 1.5%. What we've typically been seeing is that the net assessments to the towns are higher than the general fund increase because the, the state funding has declined. But this year, with the increase in chapter 70 funding, the net assessments to the town are actually slightly below the general fund budget increase. This is basically the same information, but it shows you what these increases are in terms of to the general fund budget excluding debt. That's something both towns have asked to see in terms of our presentations, is to see the operating budget separately. So when I pull out the debt assessments, which are the orangish colors at the bottom, we end up at 2.1, 3.5, 3.7, 3.1, 3.2 over the next five years. So these are the assumptions. And so what's driving the favorable FY '27 is really out-of-district tuitions. You can see we're projecting a 6% reduction. We're going to have to keep an eye on these communications we're receiving from out-of-district placements. And to some extent, that's factored into this, but if we continue to get more of them, we're going to need to, to pause and say, well, hold on a second. What this is really being driven by is we have a large number. We have 12 students either aging out or graduating this year. We don't have many eighth graders moving up to the high school. And so the combination of those two is driving this down. In a typical year, this would, you know, if it went up 3%, we'd be talking about a $250,000 increase. Instead, we're declining almost $300,000. So that's really the whole story of our budget this year. So, at least overall, the next part is how you allocate it to the towns.
Yeah.
And so this is...
Can I just make a comment on that?
Yeah.
That last slide, I, like, these numbers are staggering, like, considering this is well below even COLA, which is like the biggest impacter on our budget. And then you take into consideration that while federal dollars aren't a huge factor, like, they are, that is like a loss of funding. So this, like, when I saw this, I was like, what? I was surprised.
Yeah, and this is, this is where we are now. The Title I basically has almost no impact on the region. It's like $5,000.
Great.
The, the teacher salaries, I did factor in 3.4% increases, so the COLA of three plus steps and lanes minus any retirement impact. So that is factored in. It's, and we did factor in 8% for insurance. We're hoping for some stabilization there in our second year with Maya. And again, the tuitions is really what's, what's driving it.
Just like the tuition wave rode up there, and we needed help for a couple of years while we first band-aided our way to it, and then went out of guideline last year. The wave's coming back down, and that's why you're getting the projections you're getting. Without the sped swing of out-of-districts, we wouldn't be bringing you that number. It would be closer to...
But also, like, I think this just like speaks to so much of the investment we've made in, in-house special education, which is so good from a financial standpoint, from a community standpoint, from a kid's stand, like, I mean, across the board. It's just, it's very, it's remarkable.
And those of you who saw the Concord out-of-district numbers, we're at 0.75% of our kids out of, the pipeline is not heading to the high school the way it used to. So fingers crossed for things we can control.
Yeah, of course we're...
That we're going to continue to exit kids and not fill those seats at the same pace.
I mean, 16 out of, say, 15 to 16 out of district for CPS is three per grade. Three per grade would be 12 for the high school. We have 40 now, like, 12 plus maybe six from Carlisle. We would drastically, if that pipeline, you know, some students are going to experience problems when they get older that they don't when they're, when they're younger. So there might be some increases. But, but the, yeah, those in-district special ed programs, we have continuity that hopefully keeps them in district all the way through grade 12. And I think the launch program helps, too. We don't lose people to collaboratives.
And then hopefully attracting new people with...
Right.
We're up to eight tuition kids in at the high school right now.
Wow.
That's the other reason that number's like that.
All in launch?
Not all in launch, no. Couple of different programs.
Yeah.
But that's the other reason we had some comfort in giving you that number, because we know we've got a bit of a revenue stream there that allows for us to...
Yep.
And obviously, we have to adjust based on the needs of the kids, but there is some revenue coming.
That's really great.
Yeah. No, so when we saw that number, we paused multiple times and said, well, wait a second.
I kept going, Bob, are you sure? Are you sure?
But we'll stress that it's a projection.
Projection. We'll know more.
And I think, like, another factor, sorry, I thought I'll stop talking, but the, another factor is, like, we don't even know contracts beyond the next two years.
I mean, anything beyond FY '27 is kind of interesting information, but, you know...
Do we go back and look prior years?
I do every now and then. I'm like, oh, that was pretty good, given how little we actually knew, you know? But there's no way to be sure.
I look at what my assumptions were last year for increases by I look at what my assumptions were last year for increases by category to see if I'm being consistent, but I don't look at the total. So we've shared this with, once we published this, I think Brian is our liaison, I also shared it with the town of Carlisle. So we have a big enrollment shift this year. So if you take those assessments, you see in FY '27, we're at a 1.5% increase. The number of students in Concord decreased by a healthy number, and the number of students in Carlisle increased by 11, I believe it was, or nine. That changed percentages by a little bit under 2%, but that 2% has a dramatic impact on the assessments. Concord will have a negative 0.9 assessment. It'll be a decrease in their assessment by 0.9%. And Carlisle, an increase of 9.3 on that 1.5% increase.
So we've communicated that with Brian, and you've taken it from there.
Yes, I wanna say.
Can you send an update to the rest of us on how that went?
And good luck.
Yeah, no, what I will say, um, first, I appreciate Bob tipping me off sooner because he knew I was going to be presenting to the Carlisle Select Board. One of the topics they wanted is, we know it's early, but what's going, you know, what do you expect for both Carlisle and Concord, Carlisle in terms of budget? They were very appreciative that we got this news to them sooner rather than later. I mean, it's a, you know, for a small town, it is a, a tough pill to swallow, but one member of the Select Board said Carlisle has to remember this is a, still a very good deal that we get as a small town for quality secondary education. So, you know, it'll be interesting because Carlisle, I've got my first meeting on Carlisle budget tomorrow.
We're gonna show you the actual numbers in a minute and.
And, you know, it's gonna, it will be an interesting few months, but both the Select Board and FinCom appreciated the, the heads up.
And I think this happened maybe three years ago, the last time it happened. And Carlisle, they're very good about tracking your students, and so they were very prepared for, like, we knew this was coming, we planned for this, so.
This one didn't get the same headroom on it. I think the Concord shift down is bigger than we.
Yeah, yeah.
Two Things was the perfect storm, and I think we knew there was movement in both directions, but I don't think any of us had actually put the numbers to paper and realize. And I think part of what Bob's gonna do when we get to the workshop is show you the impact of just a student makes to Carlisle especially, because they have the smaller percentage. So every student has bigger impact exponentially compared to Concord. So a shift of 40-some Concord kids down, and I think it's 11 Carlisle up, 50 student swing is really gonna hit Carlisle.
Yep. So.
I feel bad.
Yeah. You can see the five years, I mean, '28. So the assumptions on this is we, I don't know if I have a slide on this, I think, I do in my enrollment presentation for the budget workshop, but our assumptions are we're gonna take current enrollment levels. We have the Carlisle enrollment levels from Desi's website. We have ours from Aspen, and we're just rolling those forward, assuming every student that's here continues to stay here. We're not assuming new housing developments are adding peoples because predicting when that happens is difficult. And, and we don't assume students are gonna, that existing students go to high, private school or, or come back from a private school. Those are things we can talk about in the future. I'd like to have a little bit of history and data to do that, and I don't feel like it would take some time to do that. So for now, we've kept it simple to say if you roll forward your existing projections, these are what the numbers would look like. And I'll show you kind of the sensitivity in the budget workshop presentation. So, you know, if enrollments hold, then '28's a down year for Carlisle, it's up a little bit for Concord, but you can see even when that happens, the minus 1% for Carlisle only equates to 4.3 for Concord because Concord's disproportionately larger in Carlisle. So it's about three times the impact when there's a hit in Carlisle as there is in Concord. And then a little bit of a increase for Carlisle in '29, and then 30 and 31, you know, potentially a little bit more in Concord than in Carlisle.
Until new housing comes online in Concord, and that'll have to get looked at again.
Yep. And these are the budget dates we have, and we'll move forward. Any questions on that? So I thought that was better to do in this order so I could jump into the budget workshops because one of the topics is enrollment specifically.
We weren't sure what exactly everyone's expectation was for a workshop, so given the, the story of the high school budget is gonna be this assessment shift, so it's confusing to all new committee members. And I think to the communities at large, they wanna look, they often look at our operational increases and then not fully comprehend the assessment impact, which we don't have control over. So I know in my tenure, I've had a lot of discussions of, we bring in a certain operational number, but then the, the kids in the seats shift, that number changes, and we should, I think Carlisle's leading by example there, kind of not say the budget's the issue, it's the assessment piece.
Assessment.
So I think the deeper understanding everyone has of that, and we did ask at least the Concord FinComs, and this is recorded, to at least try to listen in before we come to them with some of what we're doing tonight, so they'll have even more opportunities for understanding how things work. It's kind of nice to do it before the actual budget's in front of you and just do it at a high level.
And can you share it also with Carlisle FinCom? Share this presentation or the recording? I think they're aware that we're doing this?
They were aware.
Okay.
I did make them aware.
Make that happen, okay.
Yeah. And I shared links to this with Ryan McLean, since it was on our agenda, I just linked him to that. So I'll kind of walk through enrollment projections, their impact on assessments. So a little bit about enrollment projections, we do contract with NESDEC for enrollment projections and historical data. There's some value to what they provide, tends to be more to have reference data, historical reference data. They do, they don't really serve as a reliable resource for future projections. They, they make similar assumptions about existing enrollments. There's additional fees to factor in housing that we could potentially look to as add-on services. But in the meantime, we, we have our own simple model we developed just to take the existing enrollments for each of the three districts. RCPS, Carlisle CPS, and CCRSD, put them into a, a model, and I'll show something here that has that, and project them forward, assuming no attrition and no growth or new move-ins.
Bob, can I ask a question?
So Metco doesn't factor into, so that's important for determining capacity, but it does not affect the split of the enrollments between Carlisle and Concord.
Yeah.
Same thing with parents who, of staff who have students in the district, they don't affect the, unless they live in.
Only the resident students are in the assessment.
And you can see that in the October 1 enrollments, it's really broken down towards the end of it, so you can see exactly what they're talking about.
What kind of data do we get from NESDEC, historical data that we don't have?
It looks really nice.
We decided not to pay for it this year because we've had mixed or negative feelings on it. We've, so we can rethink that if you're interested. The historic ones are in the budget books that we publish every year, so you're welcome to go back and be like, how far wrong were they? Or how far right? And see if you want to reinvest in that. But we, we held off, so.
So the model that we're using this year does not factor in estimated impacts of housing growth. And what's most unpredictable with them is the timing of when that, when those units come online. Once they are in place, it's a little bit easier to predict. We don't factor in current students electing to enroll in a private school or vocational or for those students to come back to CCHS from a private school, which happens as well. And that's, those are things we might look to in future years. And I think initially, our confidence level might not be high on those, but if we track it and show these are what our assumptions are and see, you know, okay, we were off here, you know, we can explain why we were off and maybe get better at it as we go forward. These are existing enrollments, and this is grades three to eight. And so I just shared the percentages for each grade, so you can see that, you know, there is variability. 12 and 11 are similar, but 10 has a significant Concord disproportionately higher than in other years, and it's a bit of a dip in ninth grade. Eighth grade is high for Concord.
That's what just pleaded.
So, you know, and then fourth grade is fairly low for, for Concord and high for Carlisle, so as that group comes to the high school. So what I've done is taken these and I've rolled it forward into what the projected enrollment levels would be by school year based on those grades just advancing through each year. And what it comes up and shows is these percentages. So, you know, in FY '28, Concord would get a bump up, it'd come down a little bit in '29. 30's not too far off from '28, but those don't seem like big percentage changes in and of themselves, but you, you just saw the previous presentation. So I wanted to get at, well, what, what would a few students, you know, just changing a few students look like? So let's go back. So this is a little bit of an eye chart, so I apologize for that, but I wanted to get it all on one page. This is what we have in our projections right now. FY '26 is the base year. And then what I, what I did here is I have examples of, if our FY '27 enrollment levels were leveled to F, to, to last year, I should also point out one thing, our FY '27 budget is, is based on October 1, 2025 enrollments. That's the most recent available information when we're building the budget. That's per our regional agreement. So when you see 27 enrollments, if we were leveled this year as of October 1, 2025, we have the same assessment percentages as we did in '26, and both districts would have a 1.5% increase, similar to the district as a whole's assessment of 1.5%. So that's kind of the base scenario, assuming no change in the enrollment levels. If we subtracted one Concord student and added one Carlisle student, you can see the, let me move my, I can't see it on my screen. The Concord assessment would go from 1.5 to 1.4. Carlisle would go from 1.5 to 1.9. This is just from one, add minus one Concord, plus one Carlisle. So you can see the impact there.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know it's really hard to carry money for year to year, but is there like a vehicle, budget vehicle we can employ, like a stable, like an enrollment stabilization?
The towns can do that.
Yeah.
I don't, but that's not something this, the school district, we can't, if we have some type of stabilization fund, it, it gets equally allocated to both districts. Not equally, but it, it, we can't give some of it to one town and give some of it to another town in a given year.
Bob, you had said to me when we were chatting that, you know, other districts, they don't just base it on one year.
Yeah.
Like, our towns chose to do it this way, so.
We might want to think about that.
I mean.
That would reach our agreement.
Opening the regional agreement.
That's easier said than done.
We're gonna want to have a really thoughtful conversation about.
Well, I want to regionalize the middle school too, but you aren't either.
We're not talking about that. But I guess what my point is, it's like, yes, we've kind of feel bad, but it's also like, this is the agreement. That's how I, that's how I look at it at the end of the day.
It is the agreement.
Thank you, Brian.
No, that's okay. And you can see the flip example, if you add one Concord and subtract one Carlisle, Concord goes up one point to, from 1.5 to 1.6, Carlisle goes from 1.5 to 1.1. So, you know, the, the same impact for one student going in the other direction, you get the same benefit, but you're, it's definitely, there's more sensitivity because of the size.
That's why we see the bigger numbers in Carlisle.
Yeah.
When it swings towards them.
So then I, I.
I picked.
Picked.
Uh-oh, whose computer?
Hang on one second.
I don't know what's happening.
Did you unmute?
Everybody just check your audio.
Yeah, I was unmuted by accident. Sorry about that.
Oh, okay, good. Glad it was a simple fix.
Get back to the screen here. So the last example, let me share this again.
Why, why are there's that time? Opening the regional agreement would be like town meeting level stuff? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's a process, yeah.
Okay.
You, you would, you would need to talk, you would need to talk to the Carlisle School Committee, you'd need to talk to the town boards. We did this in a district that I was in before. It's a pretty extensive process, and, yeah, it's, it's pretty involved. And one district is gonna take the hit in the first year because, like, you look at these numbers, if you change it, somebody's gonna get the benefit of the first year, somebody's gonna get the detriment, because if you change it to four years, it's not gonna be exactly the same. So people have to look past that if they want to do it.
Right.
The second example's, okay, if we hold one district level, one town's enrollment level and add five, and you can see that adding five in Carlisle would, would bump up from 1.5 to 3% in Concord, it would just push it from 1.5 to 1.6 if you added five in Concord and held Carlisle level. So I thought that would be useful information to kind of illustrate the impact. We are obligated to follow the agreement and allocate the way it says, so that's what we do.
Of course.
That's actually helpful to see it like that, and it really shows you what the impact is.
Yeah, because once we bring you the budget, it gets lost in the numbers.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think it's, especially this year, seems good.
So that's just information we wanted to share. I thought it was relevant to this year because of the big change. And I didn't get any specific requests for the budget workshop, and I said that I would wing it and make up something I thought was useful if, if I didn't. So that's why I picked the enrollment, which is definitely relevant. If you wanted another activity, I have something I used when Tracy and Carrie were the only existing school committee members. You can decide whether you have, you think you have the time to do that or not, but I wanted to give you a, a picture of, you know, kind of the process we go through in evaluating things. And so I've come up with a group exercise for the school committee.
Test?
It's kind of like a test, and I actually think it's really, I think it's great, and I, I think we can, can we do it in like a limited time period?
Yeah, I can certainly set time limits and put some pressure on.
Yeah, totally.
Instead of the opposite way, right?
That's the real world.
Exactly. You tell us how much time.
So one, two, one, two, three.
Are you gonna do it, Shelley? You're gonna participate with us?
Shelley lives it.
Shelley lives it every day.
She, she will find it very familiar.
Can I validate that test?
So I have, I have a limited pot of money. I'll pass this around. There's extra.
Are we working with a partner?
Yeah, so maybe you can work in groups of two, and maybe one group can do three.
Three. I mean, I've actually done it before, so might I suggest that I don't do it, and you can do it with Brian?
Sure.
Or, you know.
Do you want to just sit?
Yeah.
I assure you, no matter how many times you do it.
You're still a prioritize.
Well, actually, I can still participate a little bit. Pass these down.
I've also done this.
Take one of those down.
I'll just.
Year after year, after year.
We'll let you two fight it out.
Is this the same, the same?
Similar concept, some of the scenarios are different. So we have, we, we've kind of modeled our base budget based on existing staffing, and we have some requests. We kind of have a level service budget, and then we have requests from different people. I noted who they are and what they want, and you're $180,000 below the guideline established by the town finance committee. So if you could, with your partner, kind of look through and prioritize that in the next two or three, say, three minutes.
Okay, three minutes.
As a first pass, I'm gonna, in, in a couple minutes, I'll give you a chance to ask any clarifying questions, and then maybe another two minutes.
Right, so it's what, six requests here?
Yeah.
So six requests, and we only have $180,000.
There's seven, there's one, there's one on the line.
To say a guideline.
To say a guideline, you have $180,000.
There's the.
Okay.
There's the seventh item on the second page, on the back.
We might need a couple minutes to read it before we actually.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, of course. I don't remember where you ever did this.
Like it was like four years? I don't know. Was it Bob's first year?
It must have been Bob's first.
I think it was my second. I don't know, I looked, I had a hard time finding it, but I found it.
Yeah. Looking for it first.
And just for anybody listening at home, some of the requests are a request for seventy thousand dollars for a social worker, forty thousand dollars for preventative maintenance.
Oh, yeah, put it on the screen.
Yeah, put it on the screen.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
They got a VPN to get access to.
Oh, because it's.
Okay.
Don't worry.
What do we decide?
Wait, those two are okay? You're with Lynette. You're with Lynette.
Oh, are you with them? Okay, great.
Okay. Because I'm not really going to participate because I already did it.
Well, I've done it too.
Actually, okay, I'll participate.
There's no right answer.
There's no right answer.
Is there?
I think this is Bob showing off how difficult your job is.
Yes, yes, it is, yeah.
We get it, Bob, your job's hard.
All right. I think we have to think about.
Do we have a priority?
Strategic plan.
Anyone have a priority sticking out in our group?
I think.
So we have what, three minutes?
Do you have any clarifying questions?
Any questions for Bob?
Okay, so I think we can think about.
Physical planning.
Like, FTEs, what do you mean? Like. I think you have to have, we can like give that a portion of.
Right.
That.
It's always low. Four.
Okay, so the percentage of that, I think we have to do this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have some thoughts. Anyone have any thoughts?
Education. Aren't somebody's required to, like, would this be required? Tier-two intervention.
Some would be required. Got to do that.
I think we have to say no to that.
Yeah.
We have a required score.
No, but with all these kids.
Right. I'm not saying it's not required. I'm just saying.
Yes.
Health insurance, like an unknown.
I would do that.
Yeah.
I'd ask for.
For some of these, I just want to know if there are other resources available, like for example, the social worker.
Yeah.
I think maybe this.
Are there any grants available?
I can say like.
Maintenance, I think, obviously.
I think we do a portion.
Exactly, yeah. How do you spread that out?
I don't know.
Other ones, but I think that's on the back. I think it's really important and the type of community in Western Mass that it is that they probably need.
This is a Western Mass?
I would look for some grant funding.
Yep.
And I would, I would grant fund that.
Grants next to that one.
And then I would, you can't find any.
I missed that.
Then I would go to the town and.
Okay, so this is not us?
Give us more money.
Yep.
So the percentage of the maintenance is.
Okay, what if we do a part?
Yeah.
Maintenance?
I know.
No, or you've got to divide it over a few years.
Over two years. You're almost done.
I would do the classroom teacher.
Okay. You would do the classroom teacher.
You said you would do the classroom teacher?
I say no to that.
Yeah, it's like, it's going to be like a part, yeah, like what needs.
They have twenty-three students, both for nineteen and twenty-one. They don't have thirty. And that's a lot of money, seventy thousand dollars.
How much are we at? Forty-five, fifty?
You're below it now. You're below state performance. Guess what? Anything you don't find out is coming back at you in the next year.
It's coming next year.
Yeah. My world rolls.
Yeah.
They've already started.
We're going to regionalize.
That's what I've been saying.
Always that.
Anyway, I would do, you could find a.
I still think that's too high.
Well, except for the poor performance, you're below state average.
You're going from a beat-up Corolla to like the Cadillac.
Well, but everybody's type of already, I feel like that was like.
But that is like the workforce.
I was like reading in the CT everything.
Okay.
That's my theory.
I think, I think probably.
It's a hundred and twenty and thirty-seven thousand.
Like, you're going to have to pay for this.
It doesn't sound like it's enough time.
But we could, Lori would present for the town and she'd get a few.
Or like get a few less licenses.
Ask for a bobble hammer for a discount.
I mean, get some like local farmers to find.
All right, so math, it's the math program and the.
Or, wait, what, a manufacturer?
Yeah, I think you're going to have.
And a little bit of maintenance.
Okay.
A little bit of maintenance.
Okay, so now we're.
And go back and ask for another.
And go ask, or ask some more, you gotta ask more than eighty-one.
All right, you ready?
We still don't have enough money.
Oh, we need another minute?
We can.
Yes, Andrew's going to present. He doesn't know.
I think maybe we do.
Yeah.
You ready, Andrew? Yeah?
Okay.
All right, so we're going to, we're going to go through, we'll go, we'll go just around clockwise. Start with, so what did you decide?
Eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty thousand.
I'm a little bit of an audible.
A little bit, yeah.
We're going to do the middle school reading tutor for thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
Number six.
Yeah, so we're going to do the math.
Just half.
Half of it. So that, yeah, that's just thirty-seven thousand five hundred. We'll do the, the math curriculum for a hundred and twenty. And then we will do half of the deferred, the deferred maintenance, twenty K.
Okay. ELA tutor, thirty-seven. So you didn't want to give any money, you didn't want to come in below guideline?
We came in below guideline, but, but the, so we talked about had the social worker and the need for the social worker, so we might look at other ways to fund the social worker and get creative.
Okay, grant funding.
Maybe grant funding. And we talked about how important the agricultural, mechanics folk program was and we would really look for state money to help us, state funding to help us.
Yeah.
And grant money.
Okay. I'm going to withhold.
Or go back to the town.
Yeah.
And say it's really important.
Okay. Who's next?
Okay, we decided we would do a half FTE for the social worker, so thirty-five thousand plus fifteen thousand for the maintenance and the a hundred and twenty thousand dollar math program. And I think that's it, right?
Yeah.
And then we think that we should engage some of the local farming community to help support some of the ag programming while we're looking for that grant.
Yes, exactly. The Ag Council.
You guys on the block want to fully fund the one hundred and twenty thousand dollar math program and we would fully fund the middle school and high school tutors and then beyond that we look for grant money.
Shelley's going to help us.
She's going to help.
Shelley's really good at it.
Shelley's really good at grants.
So you can compassionally, there's not going to be agricultural farming at this point.
I'm disappointed in you guys for not doing any maintenance.
I know. Wait, Michelle, we need your opinion because you have really relevant experience here.
We did maintenance.
You just did maintenance.
I do, I got to do the maintenance.
So, so you focused on the academics. There was a mix in yours. So just a couple, I'll just, a couple of things, like, so the high quality instructional materials, there was a little hint in that, there's grants for high quality. Remember it was high quality instructional materials grant? So we would, Shelley, we had a high quality instructional materials grant for ELA. So we would try to get that half funded, co-funded, so maybe that ends up being sixty. And I would advocate for the maintenance because I would be in trouble if our buildings weren't operating. But she would, Lori would ultimately.
Shelley's in total agreement with you.
Lori would ultimately make that decision. I'd love, I'd make my case for that. I think we're, social, I mean, the example we have for Western Mass, we've heard anecdotally there, like, not just schools, there are like social service centers in some of the Western Massachusetts communities, so. So, I mean, you can see, like, it's hard to make the trade-offs, that's what it was intended to illustrate. It's also interesting to see, like, you know, we only have seven people here and there's different opinions on it and so we have that same type of discussion in our meetings. But, yeah, thought it would be.
So we do some of this, I mean, this is like not an exaggeration at all. We do some of this individually with them and then we put them all in the same room so they hear what we're stressed out about, what we're competing over and try to come and.
Where they ask from different schools, asking for different things and.
Yeah, yeah.
I think what's interesting is also understanding the tricks of the game.
Yeah.
Being knowledgeable with the tricks of the game is also helpful.
At a vocational school, you know, that's something you could ask the vocational school to look into building another program, I mean, anyway. But anyways, it's an exercise, it's somewhat realistic, it's not specific to our schools.
No, we purposely made it very not.
Not specific to us. Well, I think it's helpful. I think it's helpful to understand the process that you guys are going through.
And last year I did bring you some of the things that I didn't agree to.
I love a good exercise, right?
So that, like, I did bring you some of the things we didn't push forward, like sped administrators, I said in the original budget process, I, we need them and I'm not doing it. And by the spring I was like, I've got to reallocate and you allowed me to.
Do that.
Work that out. So we have been sharing some of the things as the process evolves.
So that's the budget workshop.
All right, thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
No, this is actually helpful. It gets us like kind of focused on thinking about the budget, so. And we are sharing, we'll be sharing all this material FinCom prior to their meeting so they can post it?
Yeah, I'll send it to.
Yeah, we told them after tonight we would send it to.
Tell us about it for that, after tonight, okay.
Yeah, I can send it when I get home. I lost my battery.
And Carlisle, will they want it right now too? If we're giving it to Concord, we'd be giving it to Carlisle at the same time for the region.
That would be good.
Yeah, I don't know who to send it to there. I can send it to Lois, who do I send it to?
I will, Victor's our liaison, so you could send it to him.
To Victor, okay.
Yeah, and I can also make sure you have the chair's details.
Okay.
Just copy me and I'll make sure.
Yeah, copy.
Okay. All right, great. October one enrollments, moving on. And this, everyone should have seen the October one enrollments. I don't think there's a lot to discuss, it's very straightforward, it's just informational. Does anyone have any questions on October one enrollments?
I feel like we hit the main.
Points went throughout it, okay. Okay, we're good? All right. So moving on, I'm going to turn it over to Carrie for story of the schools. And just, just before we start on that, I, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about story of the schools, there's been, you know, some people like, oh, it's been delayed. And I just want to, again, I'm going to say it publicly, that our goal, this was part of our goals from last year, so this was not this school committee's goals, it was last year's school committee's goals. So the goal was to get out the story of the schools for the community so the community would have something at town meeting and so they'd have a handout or something just to really get the communication out beyond just our school age population to the broader community. So the goal was due for town meeting, which we remember was in June, so in April, and I will just say it again, we absolutely dropped it after the accident happened and it was the right decision and I have no regrets on that. We were not at a point that we could have finished it before town meeting. It was not something that we needed our professionals in the schools working on because there was just so much care needed at our high school. So I'm just going to say that and I'll leave it right there. So this summer, we decided to pick it up again because the summer is a time that we actually have some time to finish it, get the pictures done, get all the information together. So we picked it back up in the summer and we do do it publicly, we have our discussions publicly. So this has been a process and now that we've moved to our regional meetings being once a month and our CPS meetings, it just has taken longer because of that. So Carrie chairs that committee and she's done a fantastic job of kind of keeping us focused and working with the graphic designer to get a product that I think that we can all be proud of. So she is going to talk about, and you all have this in your packet, you have a draft version of it, so she's going to kind of talk us through where we're at and how to finish it off.
Yeah, I think the most important, I mean, Tracy kind of walked through the process. The most important thing for tonight, the hope coming out of this conversation is that we can vote on this so that any edits or changes that we agree on, we can take all of that feedback and vote on it and finalize it so that it's a complete document.
This is like a first read?
I'm hoping this is the read.
This is where, and I think I put like, let's be prepared to vote on this.
Yeah.
At the meeting so we can get this out. Because the goal is, and actually at the PTG president's meeting this morning, they made some good points about it, like, somebody said, well, can you get this to the real estate brokers? This would be really great. Or this, I have a friend that wants to move to Concord and they're between Concord and Lincoln and like, I'd love to show them something of like what our schools are. Somebody else is like, oh, is the preschool in it? I'm like, yes, the preschool's in it. So it really does showcase our pre-K to twenty-two programs.
At a high level.
At a high level, very high level.
I mean, you heard all, you heard the students tonight.
Scratches, yeah.
Like, there's so much, you couldn't possibly cover it all, but it covers the data, the budget, things like that. But all to say, so feedback welcome and I'm hoping I can take some notes and we can make whatever, I'm hoping we can incorporate any feedback and then still vote on it tonight with the agreement.
And can I just say, as we're looking at feedback, if there's any typos?
Yeah.
Like, I don't want to spend too much time talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just email me and those are.
Like, I feel like feedback needs to be content.
Yeah.
For the discussion.
Yeah, Sundeep are like resident copy editors.
Very good at it.
If you could send me your feedback.
Will do.
Okay, so with that, I really just want to open it, open it up.
Do you have a projector though?
I mean, I can, but I also feel like everyone's had it, we've been here for three and a half hours.
I know.
Maybe folks joining us on Zoom if they want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no way.
Sure, do you want to?
I can, I have it.
Do you have it handy?
I have it.
Just screenshot.
Yeah, I can do it.
So I do it, it's phenomenal. So thank you for doing that and then did that work on this.
meeting this morning, they made some good points about it. Like somebody said, well, can you get this to the real estate brokers? This would be really great. Or this, I have a friend that wants to move to Concord and they're between Concord and Lincoln. And like, I'd love to show them something of like what our schools are. Somebody else is like, oh, is the preschool in it? Like, yes, the preschool's in it. So it really does showcase our pre-K to 22 programs.
At a high level.
At a high level, very high level.
You heard all, you heard the students tonight. Like, there's so much you couldn't possibly cover at all. But it covers the data, the budget, things like that. But all to say, so feedback welcome. And I'm hoping I can take some notes and we can make whatever, I'm hoping we can incorporate any feedback and then still vote on it tonight with the agreement.
And can I just say, as we're looking at feedback, if there's any typos, like, I don't want to spend too much time talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just email me and those are.
Like, I feel like feedback needs to be content for the discussion.
Yeah, Sandeep, our like resident copy editor.
Very good at it.
If you could send me your feedback.
Will do.
Okay. So with that, I really just want to open it, open it up. I mean, I can, but I also feel like everyone's had it. We've been here for three and a half hours.
I know.
Maybe folks joining us on Zoom if they want to.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no way.
Sure. Do you want to?
I can, I have it. I have it.
Do you have it handy? Just screenshot.
Yep. I can do it.
So I do it. It's phenomenal. So thank you for doing that and then did that work on this.
Okay. I think I have it.
I also think from looking at the.
I have it.
Getting work groups process. We got the group picture tonight. So, you know, I don't think there's a question about whether, again, beyond punctuation improving, there's, I don't think there's a question of, I don't have a question. I don't know if the group has any questions on whether we move forward and with the understanding that the work group is going to proof everything before the final products. And we'll see it before the final products stepped out. So I don't, I mean, is there any real question beyond that?
Well, I think the hope is, and maybe, maybe people disagree with me, because we're only meeting once a month, the hope is that tonight we can take any feedback on like edits or changes beyond typos and, and vote on it so that it's final. And obviously, everyone will have access to it. But we won't bring it back to this committee for further discussion just because that would bring us into the middle of November and really the end of, it would be January before it's a completed document. And so the hope is that tonight we can finalize it so we can make all of these last minute edits and whatnot. And.
Then does anyone have any substantive?
That's the question.
Comments, yeah. Does anybody have any?
Is there content that we fail to include? Is there content we shouldn't?
From the committee.
Yes.
Yep.
The one note, I will say, on the last page.
Hey, I'm just going to, I did that page. Sorry.
So I can, we can just, let's just like talk through it quickly. So the, this is the first page is just, yeah. So there's a message from the superintendent. It just talks about our mission, how people can stay connected. It has a QR code to Lori's weekly newsletter, which is up on our website or on the district's website. On the next page, it talks all about academics. So the educational value, this goes through a lot of the recent rankings. It talks just about enrollment numbers. So how many students, how many staff and teachers, how many buildings, and then what are the class of 2025 went on to do?
And I should also say, the goal is that this would be something that the, the school committee started last year and we would hand it over to the district to, in the future, you know, roll this out annually.
Correct.
If that's the, you know, it's a little tricky if we don't get it out now. Like, we're looking at annually being like, you know, maybe it's over the summer. It's, it would come out every summer or back to school or that has to be decided by the district.
Yep.
Okay. Go to the next page.
So the next page is a focus on our strategic plan, which was last, oh, I guess 2023 to 2028. It's a five-year plan. This walks through what it is. And then it gives a few examples across the district of what it looks like in the schools. I'm realizing we need to add a caption for Rivers.
Oh, right, right there?
Yeah.
Yep.
This second page is living out our values. So the, it goes through kicks for cancer. There's a message from our, from Andrew about our DEI initiatives. Many of our DEI initiatives talks about Concord possibilities with a plug to go see it. It talks about the STEM Lab, STEAM Lab, which is, I think, such a cool, unique.
Awesome.
Program. It talks about the opening of the new middle school with a QR code to the awesome ribbon cutting, which featured so many students. And then it talks about our commitment beyond just academics. And it goes through athletics and clubs. And it features just a few of the really great programs, arts and music, clubs, athletics, all of that. It goes into a budgeting section with a message from Bob and about, it gives a very brief overview of what our regional allocation is. And then it gives an overview of where school funding comes from and how we spend it. And then there is at the bottom a section on the key capital projects that are in the works. And then the last page is the only kind of blank space. Number one, this is actually something we do need to agree on. We need to have everybody, I don't know if we need to vote it or if it's included in the voting of the document.
It's included in voting of the document.
Okay. So there's a statement from the school committee. We will take a picture. And then there's, Tracy had asked for our goals to be put into a document that we could put up on the committee room meeting in Ripley.
So our goals document right now is really boring. Thank you for doing it, Andrew, but it's really boring. It's just a, it's a Word document with all of our goals in it. And where we have this access right now, and this has kind of been a school funding project, I would like our goals to be more visual. So we see them all the time in our room, our commitment to our goals, and also put the graphic on this story of the schools. It's going to be condensed a little bit because all of the text will not fit on there. But the key.
The top lines. So basically, the, for, I have it open somewhere. I had our goals open so I could read them. But basically, like the top line of our goals would be on here. And then, but for the committee room, it would be the full SMART goals with a photo. So that is, that is it. The statement, if, yeah.
One comment.
Yeah.
We have QR codes in a couple of places. I think it'd be good to have a QR code to this document itself on the back.
To our goals?
No, not, do this studio schools itself.
Oh, like where? You can find it online?
So, so if you don't want to pick up a copy, just scan it.
So we talked about that as a committee. We talked about how many copies are we going to print, right? Because there's printing costs associated with it. You know, when this project started last year, we had talked about.
Wait, can we, can we finish the content?
The content, yes.
Then we'll talk about distribution. Is that okay?
Yes, totally.
So, yeah. So that's sort of the run through of it. Does anybody have any content changes?
You understand what I was saying, right?
Yes. To where this document will live on our website.
Yes.
Yeah.
Totally.
Is everyone okay with that?
I don't have any, don't have any context, content issues if what's going in the goal graph would be our top line from number one, number two, number three, number four on our budget and all of us with our signatures or facsimiles thereof in that goals graphic? Is that what the?
So, so the goals, so we have the protocols and the goals that are on the website right now. So this would be the goals. So our signatures wouldn't be on it.
Okay.
I don't think they'll fit. I mean, if they would fit, I a hundred percent would do that. Because I think it is important. I think Alicia spoke to that, you know, that when you sign things. And we could look towards that document that actually is on the website. I actually think it might be good if I print it and we all sign it, then we scan it on.
I like that idea.
So maybe we do that for the website. And then the goal graphic will just, I mean, I'm assuming it's going to use the same colors that are throughout here. It's going to look similar to some of the graphics that she's done for the rest of it. So maybe if the next meeting, I'll bring a printed version. We'll all sign it. And Michelle, you're still online, I think. Yep, she's still online.
Yes.
So I was not at, I don't think I was at the meeting at the very end when you guys finished up the protocols. So I added your name and Ayesha's name to it. So we'll have you two also sign it. And I just didn't tell you that. And so I feel like I, I just kind of did it. And I'm like, I hope it's okay. So are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. I'm sure I should.
With the protocols that we talked about, I think it was the September meeting.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. So I'll bring that for November.
The other thing I'd suggest, a meeting that I watched, when you were talking about Carlisle City in the Woods, we have Concord Currents here as another way to electronically disseminate this.
Yeah. And they also have, they have that Concord, I haven't listened to it yet, the Concord podcast that Megan's doing. And Concord Currents is, I just subscribe to it and it's.
I get it. Yeah.
Do you get it? So you have to subscribe to it on the town website. Do Carlisle, do you have to subscribe to yours or no?
City in the Woods, yes.
City in the Woods.
You have to subscribe to it. And it's not run by the town at all.
Oh.
Yeah, no, City in the, it's still a good way to.
Okay, okay.
Still a good way to share information.
Okay.
I don't think the town would like people to think they run it at all.
Okay. So we could share a QR code or something in that, or maybe ask for, if there's a way that you guys could figure out how we could submit to that?
Oh, yeah. One of us could just.
We can just post it.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Great. Great.
Yeah. I just think the more, more forms that we can use to post it out, social media, it would be great.
And your social media. I know Malindi's always great about the reposting. So, okay. I'm going to stop sharing. Are you okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I just want to say again, like, this is just one way of getting the story of the school out there.
Yes.
Yes.
And we have to continue to think of other ways. I mean, even for the benefit of the committee, Carlisle has a municipal newsletter. Carlisle Public always submitted. Concord Carlisle never did. We're now submitting monthly. So like, these are the things I think we all just need to be thinking about to get the, get the word out.
Yep. And in both, and in both towns.
In both towns.
Yeah. Because I think that's.
Perfect segue to, again, now that this is together and templated, looking at other ways for us to communicate with both communities and have that somewhat clarified because the years rolling by.
And the one thing I think that, like what I always took away from charting the course, and that's like my favorite thing to talk about. And it's okay if you haven't done it. I mean, I know Andrew was a little late in doing it, but he did do it. Yeah, it's okay.
No, no, so he's the new Andrew.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. So we could just give you a hard time the whole time. But what Glenn would always say is that like every school committee meeting, oh, Lynette, oh, perfect. You have a full year to do it. It's fine. But what Glenn would always say is every school committee meeting should be a chapter in, in like your book of the year. So like, that is part of the story too. And so all of our meetings, like those are all part of our story. And so to try and just get information out there any way we can.
Yep.
All right. So with that, we're going to do it right now. So I would entertain a motion to approve the story of the schools for distribution. And if there are any edits, the communications subcommittee will make edits.
Second.
Can you move it?
Oh, I thought you moved it.
No, I can't move it.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Big thank you.
All right. Next up is a representative to the town bias reporting working group. So last night, at this, we talked about this at the CPS meeting last month, and we tabled it to the regional meeting. So the seven of us could discuss this. The select board did it last night. I know that a few of us were there. And so this is a working group to develop a townwide incident reporting system, similar to what we have in the schools. So we've been asked for a school committee representative for that. And I've had a couple of people reach out for interest in that. So I guess what I will say is, who is interested in being part of the, I know we're all interested, but who is, is interested in being on the group and would like to throw their hat in the ring?
I am.
Michael? Sandeep? Anyone else?
I'm interested, but I feel like it makes more sense for it to be a Concord member.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
And we just wanted you guys to be part of the discussion so you knew that.
And I appreciate that.
Yeah. Because I know we've had some feedback that sometimes it's like, well, can we do it? Because we're in Carlisle. Yes, you can. You know, so I think that will be received very well, given last night's discussion. Okay. So I'm going to run this the same way that Mark did it last night. So if each one of you, and you were both present at the meeting, so if each one of you could kind of make your statement of, you know, why you'd like to do it. And then we'll just literally awkwardly go around the room and awkwardly just, you know, I hate to say like vote for each one of you. Obviously, you would both be excellent candidates for this committee. I will say that. So I will let you make your statement of purpose and then we'll go around the room.
So I don't have a whole lot prepared. But I will tell you this, this is the, the working group. The work it's doing is, is difficult. It's hard.
Can you bring your microphone closer? Because I feel like he's going to tell you to do that. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I didn't get. And, and it's, it's important for us to get it right. I, I, everyone here, we've, we've, you know, faced bias incidents. I don't think it's a competition of who's faced more bias than the others. I don't know what it's like to walk in Michael's shoes. I don't know what it's like to be a woman in a workplace. But I have faced instances of bias. And I, I know the, the feeling that you get when you're subject to it. And that's not something we want for anyone in this town. So for us to be able to get there, I think it's important for us to understand where we stand today. And that's, that's, I think, what the goal of this working group is, as I see it. It's for us to hold a mirror to the community to see, maybe we're not as perfect as we think because all of these incidents are taking place. I, I would hate for that effort to become into something with its neighbor against neighbor. And I, I don't think anyone, the, the, the working group right now is, is trying to do that. But that, that's going to be my emphasis, I think, when I, if, if I'm appointed to it, is, is to make sure that we value the, the privacy, the First Amendment rights of the people in town. At the same time, make sure that, you know, we do have data at a statistically significant level to find out where we actually stand. You know, I, I think the one thing that I might bring to that working group is access to listen to a, a section of the town that maybe is not represented on there. All of that being said, if it's Michael, I will rest easy because I know he'll do a good job on there.
Thank you. Michael?
I'm 73 years old. I was born and raised here. I've had the experience of traveling in the deep south. I've integrated schools. I've come here with my wife and raised four biracial children in the community, faced all aspects of discrimination, bias and hate in every phase of our life, in every place, including here. The purpose of this work group is not to adjudicate anything, but to look at the various different systems that are around or even create a system that's unique for reporting in our community. I think it's important in the work of doing that to have an understanding and a perspective on the way variety of different biases feel. As came out in our select board meeting, the suggestion that the working group be as broadly based as possible. And I think when I look at the structure of our committee, I look at the structure of our role group, I, my life experience might be uniquely placed to give a perspective that's not available and currently not present. So I offer myself as a, as a candidate. I hope I could be accepted as one.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, just to help me understand, how many people are joining this working group? And what is the?
Makeup?
Yeah.
What is the makeup? And then what is the ultimate charter of this group? Like, what does done look like?
So the charge has been written. I believe it was approved in September. It's, it's on the select.
Apologize if it's in the packet.
It's not in the packet. Sorry, I should have put it in the packet. It's on the Concord Select Board website. Paul Bohm is the Select Board representative. The DI Commission, Agnes is joining from the DI Commission. They appointed two community members at large, and I'm going to get this wrong. I think I have it right. Deborah Dorfman and Daniel Hart.
Okay.
I don't think there was extensive discussion of, there was some discussion of everybody's background and kind of what they brought to the table.
There was a discussion.
Discussion. And so the select board voted on those two community members at large. And I think the schools, they, they'd like one voting member. I mean, something that, you know, just kind of thinking on the spot here. I wonder if we could have two representatives in one vote. I was just thinking out loud. I have not asked that question. That might be an interesting question to pose back to them. Because I would think that the more representation they have of their committee, maybe the better. Any thoughts on that from either one of you, from listening to the discussion last night?
So I, I think the broader the community can reach, the better it will be. So if they can have two, great.
The charge is definitely for five voting members. That would be, so I think we have to choose a, a voting member. And then I could pose the question back to the select board.
So we're all welcome to join as members.
As, right. Right. But you wouldn't be part of the discussion. So sometimes like Carrie LaFleur is the, she is the representative from the town and she is a non-voting member. So she can participate but not vote.
Right.
And the goal is to marry this with the school reporting system or complement it?
Well, I spoke with Paul briefly today and I think it would be like, that's like a three to five year down the road project. Right now, it's just to, to figure out how to get a town reporting system in place.
Or if that is even the right option. I don't think there is a determination that that it is.
Yes.
I don't know.
And then just one other question I have. So the four people who have been identified, do any of them have students and have children who attend any of the schools? Would you know? My reason for asking that is I just think.
Actually, yes.
School lens is quite important.
Yeah.
And understanding what's happening.
I think Agnes.
Does Agnes have children?
Has children in, in the school system.
Okay.
In, in our schools, yeah.
Okay.
So just Agnes?
Right.
Okay. So one out of the four members.
Understood.
Paul has grandchildren in his schools.
Okay. Well, thank you for your statements. And I think that, so this is how it went with the select board. I'm going to follow the same way of going. I'm going to go around the room and you can just, sorry, put your choice out there. Go ahead. You can vote for yourself or for Michael. It's up to you. And I'll give Michael the same choice vote for you or himself.
So as much as, you know, I, I believe in Michael's ability, this is entirely unbiased going into this bias working group, I'll vote for myself.
Okay. Fair. Michael?
I'll vote for myself.
All right. All right. Lynette, sorry, you're up next.
Okay. I guess I would vote for Sandeep just to have someone else with kids in the schools and younger kids to get the full view of the whole community.
Okay. Carrie?
Yeah, I think both of you do an exceptional job. And I think for the same reason, I'm going to vote for Sandeep.
Yes, Sandeep.
Okay. So right there, we have four. We should, do you want us to keep voting?
I mean, I will just close as well. Sandeep for those exact reasons.
Okay. Okay. So Sandeep will bear a representative. But I will go back to Paul and I will ask if we can have another non-voting member because we had interest. I mean, I don't know why.
We should ask for a voting member.
A voting member?
Yeah.
And ask for two?
Yeah.
Are you guys okay with that?
I would.
I would think that, yeah, I mean, the schools are the
Our large part.
Concord, they're the, the heart of the town.
And I do feel as though we have, we do have a reporting system. The schools do have a reporting system, so I will go back and I will ask. So I will email Paul, and I'll ask for a second voting member? Is that what this discussion is leading towards?
Ask, yeah.
I support that, yeah.
Okay, is that okay? Alright, alright, thank you. Alright, and then our last item up today are statements from the school committee and the school committee chairs. And due to some recent events, I'm gonna let Andrew just lead this entire discussion.
Yeah, thank you. So you brought this up out of respect, I wanted to put this on, and I'll be the first to say, you know, as chairs, you ask us to make decisions, we set the agenda, we try to do best we can. I'm not saying we're right all the time, so this could be an instance where the committee disagrees, and I'm, I'm totally good with the answer. But the question came up on, when do we make statements from the committee? And when do the chairs make statements on issues that happen in our schools and maybe in our town for bias and, and hate? Currently, the way it's been operating the last few years is that when there is an issue, and there's an incident in our schools, the principal of the school generally puts out a statement to that school community. Sometimes Lori will supplement that, depending on the situation. For the district, Katie and Brian put out statements, and again, sometimes you supplement that. For district-wide issues, Lori generally puts out statements. And for extenuating circumstances, we, as a school committee, will put out statements. I think in the last few years, the committee has only issued a handful of statements. So that's the way it's, it's going. The request is to discuss and issue statements more frequently for incidents that occur, not only in our schools, but also in the town. I have not put that on the agenda, but I am very open to putting that on, if we, if we want to. So kinda like you just did, I'd like to kinda go around, get everyone's thoughts, see if we wanna change our, our way, and go from there. Does that make sense? Did I frame it up okay?
So I, I'm a little confused, but maybe I'll start with the way I interpreted it, and then you can tell me what I'm wrong. So, is, is the, the, the discussion that we add things that are not under the school committee purview, but there is interest in the school committee discussing it, to the agenda?
We could do that, we could, I, I think, do we want to take incidents that happen in the schools or out of the schools, and discuss them in open meeting? We could take one at a time, or we could just generalize, incidents that happen, or incidents in the schools, and not in the schools. And just the way I understand it, and the way, this is not an easy decision, in my opinion, because if something happens, school committee would discuss it, create a statement. You can only do that in open meetings. So if we wanna do that, we'd have to either wait till our next meeting, if it's a K through eight, you know, that's monthly. If it's a regional, that's, you know, also monthly, so we probably wouldn't be timely with some of these statements. Or, you know, we call, call special meetings. And given the frequency of events that happen in schools and towns, like, we'd be talking about incidents quite a bit.
And then I guess I would just interject with, that Andrew and I did make a statement to the community, I don't know, two weeks ago, because it did involve the superintendent. And so it's really awkward when something involves you to make that statement, so you're not going to do that. So that's why we sent that statement out.
Does that answer your question?
Kinda, maybe I'll just ask it more directly, right? So, say there was an incident in town, not, not in a school building, but maybe a, 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 well, makes it complicated, right, because we don't discuss kids.
We discussed a business of the school committee.
Right, so, so, so say, say that is something that a, a paid volunteer at a school does, right? They're, they're not necessarily under the burden of the school committee.
Right.
Do we discuss that?
That's, I, I have said no, because I, you know, it's not, they're not, it's not business of the school committee, but I, I could be wrong.
But, but they may be, say, a, a paid volunteer does something egregious in a school building, then it becomes the job of the school committee to discuss. I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm asking.
I think that's the question.
It strikes me, it strikes me that we might be missing some of the import of, I, I understand the charge of a school committee for the community and for the schools is to be a conduit of information, and to be a, a beacon or an icon for best practices and what we should do. We should bring information to our citizens of what's going on, and be able to hear them. And when events happen in our physical space, in our community, that impacts members of our community in our capacity as following that part of our charge, I think we have a responsibility to make a comment. Now, the comment is not one to, to criticize or to point fingers. The comment is, in, in my mind's eye, at least, at least in each of the cases that I've, I'd hoped that we, as a body, would make a comment, and in cases where our community had hoped, as a body, we would have made a comment, the comment would have been to support those aggrieved and educate those unclear on what they'd done that had caused the harm, both to point that out, and again, to educate. So, so I see that that's part of our responsibility as school committee members, to our community.
I have a, I don't disagree with anything you said. I think what I, where I differ is that our role as a, as a school committee, I mean, I, I think that our job is to, to share what's happening, and to listen, and all of that. And when something happens, our job is to make sure that it is communicated. I don't know it's our job to do the communicating. Meaning, if there is a statement that is put out from a principal, from a superintendent, from anybody in the district, like, that is what we are to share. Like, that is what we are to say, like, this is what the schools are saying about this. You can have, you can add your own, I can add my own, I'll speak for myself, I can add my own, like, anecdote, like, I can say, I'm, I'm grateful that they, that they said this, or I don't think this went far enough. Or, you can, you can add your own reaction to it. But I think that our, our responsibility as a school community, from the school committee to the administration, to the buildings, is to make a statement, yes, a hundred percent. But I don't agree that it should be us who's doing all of the communicating.
I don't think we have to do all the communicating, but I do think that that in, in the, the clause in the Masters Association of School Committees handbook for school committee members to communicate to our community. We can communicate concern to our community, we can communicate care to our community, we can educate our community. And certainly, in some of the instances that have happened just over the past six months, one has to say that there's, there's been a, a cry from our community to hear that, not just from, from the, the administration, but also from us. And, and I, I think that that speaks to that, and I think that's part of our responsibility in being members, school committee members in our community.
So, so then I, sorry, then the question becomes which incidents we respond to and which we don't.
Right.
And that's something, that's, well, it is tricky, but that's why we've got all these people here sitting around the table to, to determine that and to discuss that.
I guess I, when I think about that, I don't just think about incidents of hate and bias. I think about, like, ambulances who, that show up at the, at the schools. I think about
A bus accident.
I think about a, a, a lacrosse team winning a state championship. You know, I feel, I think that there's like, from all, that there are so many things that we could put out statements for, that I don't know how you would possibly
I suppose I think that, that those are pretty clear, that we wanna congratulate the, the winners, con- console the losers, and that's something that the district may be able to handle. That's something the administration be able to handle, but there's an event, and, and clearly, I'm, I'm thinking about bias, and hate events of which sadly we've had more than our share lately. There, I think we have, we might have actually moral responsibility to reach out our hand, and, you know, we're not talking about ambulance accident, we're not talking about a bus accident, you know, or, or, or a hazmat spill in a classroom, where all that information needs to be conveyed, and conveyed appropriately in a timely manner. But where we know that there are groups in our community that feel harm and have faced harm, that we at least speak to that. And, and communicate this, we understand that, we see you, and, 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 and to, to, to those that may have created the harm, we wanna reach out a hand to help you understand and help, help remediate, if we can, but not, not, certainly not to criticize, certainly not to point fingers. But I think our community, in a variety of different ways, over the course of the entire past, past two seasons, has been asking for that.
May I jump in here? First of all, I just wanna thank everybody for this conversation, because I think this is a really great topic and discussion to have. I think that when something occurs, you know, multiple times over a short period, and, and it becomes clear that there is a pattern of incidents occurring, it's something that we need to look at as a committee. And I know that these are really tricky things and hard things to discuss, and I'm really grateful that we're, we're talking about it. I, I do think that there are some things that would need to be discussed, you know, coming from the school committee. And I think that, you know, my experience interacting with the families that I represent is, you know, a, a history of feeling unheard. So if you have things like that happening, and, and people looking to feel heard, and then something occurs and a statement is made, then people start feeling heard. And sometimes things like that happening are an opportunity to kinda come together as a community and, and find some common ground. So, you know, even though negative things are happening, they can be turned into a positive experience for everybody by looking at it from a different angle. So, you know, trying to, you know, find out the line where you would make the announcements and not make the announcements may be challenging, but looking at the repetition over time may be something that we would wanna consider when making that decision.
I mean, I think for me, part of it is we have a chair, I mean, or two chairs for some of you. We need to rely on the chairs to use their, use their judgment, and also, we have, you know, it's a partnership. It's not a superintendent's statement versus the school committee's statement. Your statement should echo what we're feeling. There's probably times where it is joint, you know, Jim and I, this summer, sent a joint email to the Carlisle community that we worked on together. I don't, I personally don't think it's, the communities need to hear from, from Lori, and always need to hear from us. I think it is a partnership, and, you know, I think Bedford, last week, was saying, there are a lot of times where she, the chair, issue statements on behalf of the school committee. Because they've voted for her to be the chair, and, you know, she's got that, that, that role, as opposed to, you know, some, call a special meeting and let's craft something together. So, you know, I think part of it is just trusting the chair and the superintendent to, to use their best judgment in a lot of these circumstances in terms of when we make statements.
Brian, I agree with pretty much all of what you said. The, 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 the only thing I might point out is Lori's communication doesn't go to everyone in the, the community, right? It, it goes to the parents, so if there is somebody from the broader community who wants to hear, if there is a way for them to, you know, get those statements?
It goes on the district website, though, as well, so that's
And I stand corrected.
available to everybody.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
And it's going to both papers.
Excellent.
I guess I still have the, the, the question in my mind, and, and Michelle alluded to it. We all know that there are populations that do not feel heard, that do not feel represented. And when harms happen to them, and we've had this example as recently as this summer, when harms happen to them, I know they've, I, 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 I know, I think we've all heard the question, well, why did not the school committee address that? And, and again, not from the perspective of assigning blame, from the perspective of reaching out a hand to support, and reaching out a hand to educate. And I see that as our job. I see that spelled out in everything that I've read when I went to charting the course. And, and I think not doing that, not setting that example, makes it easier for events that we've seen happen to continue. Not having difficult, not having difficult discussions, in, in view of the public, makes it easier for things to be brushed under the rug. And if we don't have those discussions, if we don't face difficult questions, as you heard in the, the DI Commission candidate forum, when Paul Bohm broke down. But the question that came, the, the answer that came from that is that it's important to have those difficult discussions so that change can take place. And if we're not gonna have those discussions, we're, we're, we're missing part of our job, we're abdicating part of our responsibility.
And I think, you know, I do think that some of the challenge is determining when a statement is made or not. Like, I know as a, and I'll just speak for myself as a high school parent, so I'll get an email from the principal, I get an email from the superintendent, do I need another email from the school committee? I, I mean, I think that that's what sometimes people struggle with, is how many statements, you know, are you getting? And then it's also, how does the school committee then have a meeting to write, because we have to do it in public, to write the statement in public, so there are logistics around making statements. You know, we, Brian and I went to a, Brian and I went to a chairs roundtable discussion, Friday. And like this, this, we talked about this topic, and some school committees, you know, leave it to the chair, some, you know, have a protocol, others are like, we don't make any statements, because we are the district when the district's making a statement, that we're supporting the superintendent in making the statement. So it runs the gamut of what different school committees wanna do. And, and that's why I think we brought this to a discussion tonight, to have it in the public, and what does this school committee wanna do?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not hearing a lot of call for change. You have been the only one emailing me to make statements, I have not heard it from anyone else on the committee. So I will leave maybe with this thought, is that if I, if we receive multiple requests to address a specific incident bias of hate, make a statement prior to a meeting from multiple people, I think we can definitely talk about it. But if it's, you know, one incident from one person, I don't, you know, I think that is up to the chairs.
So, just to be clear, we don't see that we have a role for our community to support the aggrieved and to offer instruction. We don't see that as part of our charge.
As a school committee member?
As, 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 as a body, because
So, I, I
we can't, we can't make decisions, we can't speak independently. But you're saying that we can't come together, either in person or virtually, when incidents come up that we know harm people in our community, and just say that we've got you, we see you. We can't do that, we don't see a need for it.
I do that all the time.
Yeah.
I do that all the time.
But we don't see a need to do that as a body, that's But we don't see a need to do that as a body. That's the question I have.
I think you're putting words in people's mouths.
No, I mean, well, you sort of said that you're not going to make, we're not going to agree on making statements, so I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm just trying to understand, is that what we're saying?
That's what you're saying.
I'm asking a question. What, I'm just asking a question.
I think it's late. I think we can, there's no vote on this. I wanted to pull the committee to make sure I wasn't making bad decisions and keep talking about this.
So Andrew, what I did here is you save that as interest from multiple members in the committee. It will be discussed.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's my proposal.
I think that's fair.
I think that makes sense.
Cool. All right, long meeting.
All right. I think it's a good discussion to have. And I think, you know, again, we act as a body. We don't act as individuals. So I think that was a good, you know, us just discussing it publicly was helpful. So with that, we don't have any more votes. I
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, thank you. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good night.